Before we start the meeting, if anybody at home.
Can someone please speak so I can test my speaker on this?
Ms. Marshawn, I am speaking right now. Do you hear me? Do you hear, do you hear me now, Ms. Marshawn?
Thank you.
It is nine thirty-one. Are we expecting anyone else that you can see, Dr. Evans, that is not here that you're expecting?
Nope, everybody's present.
Okay, I will keep my eyes open on the attendee list if someone should come on. We have a number of attendees here to listen for public comment. So I'd like to call this meeting, the school committee meeting, July seventh to order. We're serving, um, meeting remotely due to COVID nineteen pandemic. We have just come out of an executive session. The committee was in an executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy-related bargaining, Unit A teachers. An individual contract superintendent says to do so in open session may prove detrimental to bargaining. I'm going to go over our agenda and then we'll move on to the meeting. We will start with public comment. We will follow with reports and discussion items. We have returned to school preliminary DSC guidance, capital planning, committee assignments, discussion, MASC statement on anti-racism. We have action item, acceptance of two gifts, a vote to approve superintendent's salary, a vote to approve school committee meeting dates. We have chair report, superintendent reports, future agenda items, next meeting dates, and adjournment. So with that, I'm just going to quickly look and see if there's anyone else who I should have admitted to know. We'll move to public comment, and I have a little something I would like to read before we start public comment.
Mr. Venali, I see Ms. Pam Dryard in the.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And Ms. Bollinier, I've made you a co-host, so if you see anybody who should be admitted to the meeting as well, could you please do so? And so before we begin public comment, I'd like to remind everybody that public comment is a chance for members of the public to express their opinions on matters under the jurisdiction of the school committee. It's not dialogue. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. We will attempt to keep comments to a total of fifteen minutes. Please raise your digital hand if you'd like to be recognized for comment. We will attempt to recognize multiple attendees at the same time if they're speaking together. Speakers should state their names and addresses. During COVID, we moved to a written submission-only policy of accepting and reading aloud written public comments. At the end of the fifteen minutes, we will allow for an additional ten minutes for the chair to read comments or excerpts from comments from community members. All comments in their entirety have been shared with the committee. Please note that, starting with our next meeting, we'll be fully moving to an in-person, promote, obviously, public comment period exclusively, though public is always invited to share their thoughts via email with the committee. With that, I would ask anyone who is here for public comment to raise their digital hand. And I will call on you. I will again remind you to state your name, your address, and try to limit your comments to a few minutes. With that, I will start with Ms. Sophie Lewis. I'm going to hold on, allow you to talk. Ms. Lewis, you should be able to speak.
Um, high school committee members, my name is Sophie Lewis. I live at sixty-one Church Street, and I graduated from Winchester High School in twenty seventeen. I would like to share some thoughts with you as you consider adopting the MASC statement on anti-racism. I want to begin by saying that I'm impressed by this initiative and hope that if adopted will lead to critical examination of our current school system. And more importantly, the ways in which our schools can take concrete steps to address systemic racism. As you're aware, the statement calls upon schools to quote, "implement change with sustainable policies that are evidence-based, eradicating racist practices." I strongly believe that this statement cannot be adopted without also addressing the Sajem. Enacting real change for our school should start with replacing this mascot. When I was a student at WHS, I took pride in this mascot. I have vivid memories as a field hockey player, starting every game with a Sajem cheer. I believe that our school was honoring Native people and not like other clearly offensive Native mascots. I knew Sajem was a term for a leader, but I was never taught about the history of Native people in this region, or why this was chosen as our mascot. It was on until college that I began to think more critically about the mascot and its role as Winchester's symbol. It didn't take long with some Google searching and personal reflection to realize that not only is the Sajem logo not a representation of the woman it is supposed to be honoring, but it is perpetuating a harmful narrative. I began to feel ashamed and embarrassed. How could my education not have included any mention of this? It became painful for me when I was home on break to see this red face caricature all over town on clothing. So I decided to start an alumni petition to gather support for enacting a change to our mascot, because I believe we have a special voice in this movement. The petition now has more than three thousand five hundred signatures and counting, and many heartfelt comments from members of the alumni community. I'd like to read a few of these comments for you now. Olivia Rizzo, WHS class of two thousand and two. This was literally brought up when I was at WHS, and I graduated in two thousand and two. Shameful that nothing changed, and it's time the district does something. Which side of history does Winchester want to be on? Veronica Ward, WHS class of twenty fifteen. I would love to honor the Native people of our area in a more productive way than a harmful stereotype-enhancing mascot caricature. I don't want to erase history. I want to learn about the Native tribes in our high school history classes instead. Let's actually honor. This outdated mascot is not it. Sylvia Dowdell, WHS class of twenty eighteen. I wore this racist mascot on my soccer jersey. Winchester must remove it and educate their students on why it is offensive. Take responsibility for this outright and unjustifiable racism and incorporate anti-racism into the curriculum. Anti-racism work is challenging, and Winchester has a long way to go to have students graduating as well-informed anti-racist citizens. Yet I see this change of mascot as an exciting first step to show that the adoption of this statement will not just be empty words. We have a great opportunity. Let's take advantage of it. With a new mascot that our entire community can feel proud of, future Winchester students will no longer graduate as ill-informed as I was. Thank you for your service to the schools and community and for considering this vital change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Next, Ms. Di Matteo.
Hi.
You may, you may provide any public comment you like. You have three minutes.
Um, there is someone who's going to speak with me. Bujana is going to speak with me.
Who is?
Bujana.
I'm looking.
She's the third person in the list.
Third person in the list? Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Di Matteo, and I'm sorry, my apologies. I will have a hard time pronouncing your name.
Hi, my name is Bryce Di Matteo, and I live at eleven Bacon Street. I'm going to be a senior at Winchester High School, and I've attended Winchester Public Schools my whole life. While we meet this morning, we are in the midst of a global pandemic that has affected everyone's life. At the same time, we're also experiencing a societal awakening where systematic racism is finally coming to the national forefront. While this discussion is happening,
Ms. Di Matteo, I cannot hear you.
Ms. Di Matteo, we cannot hear you.
Uh, hello. My name is Bujana Stoyantiev, and I am a recent graduate of Winchester High School. I was born and raised here in Winchester, and I've been in the WPS system for my eighteen years here. I speak today as a representative of the Winchester Student Allies for Native Mascot Change. Our mission as student leaders in the Winchester community is to stand with Native American people in the movement for respectful mascots and begin a conversation about how we may accurately honor our town's history. Our lack of education surrounding Native American history and culture has led to our inability to see the overt racism attached to our usage of the Saukum mascot. We know what racism against people of color looks like. We know what it means to be racist against Black people, and we understand the connotations of using a derogatory slur or dressing up in blackface. But we don't connect this with the widespread stereotyping and misappropriation of Native American culture. Our lack of education surrounding the realities of racism against Native Americans has led to our failure to recognize how our own mascot contributes to their continued oppression and misrepresentation. One of the most common arguments we hear in keeping the mascot is that it honors the past. To that, we ask, what about Native Americans today? Our reliance on mascots as a way to honor Native Americans and their history prohibits us from acknowledging and forming relationships with the contemporary Native American community. Two weeks ago, during a town-wide dialogue, R. Ruposted with invited Native speakers to discuss the implications of our own native mascot, the most common frustration expressed by our three speakers was that although the stated intent of mascots is to honor the past, it instead works to erase Native Americans from the present. Elizabeth Solomon of the Massachusetts tribe said, "If you want to honor the Massachusetts people, you should get to know us. If you are not teaching our history, then your mascot is not honoring history. The mascot puts us in the past. We are here now. We have always been here. We have been here for tens of thousands of years." The idea of a stereotypical image of a Saukum, which is not what a Saukum would look like, it's not honoring the town. Thank you.
You're muted, Brian. We can't hear you.
Thank you. I would like to welcome B. Ross, who has his or her hand raised. You state, again, my apologies, I did not remind the other speakers if you state your name and full name and address before speaking. Thank you.
Sorry, my full name is Brooke Ross. I live at twenty-one Swan Road. I'm what most people would currently consider a true Sajem. Like many that oppose this change, I'm an athlete. I'd like to share some of the posts that I recently shared on social media, specifically in response to a few athletes that posted about keeping the mascot due to the fact that they had simply put too much work, or in their words, blood, sweat, and tears into being a Sajem, and it would be unfair to take that away. My post read, "I've been a Sajem since age three, since Little Rincoke and Sandlot Soccer. I've played almost every town sport as a Sajem. And with two siblings worth of hammy downs, I probably have more Sajem gear than anyone in this town. I was lucky enough to play in twelve varsity teams as a Sajem, and I've been captain three times. I wore this logo proudly for almost my whole life, but I know when enough is enough. I have just as much pride for Winchester as anyone else. Don't make this about sports, because it's far more important than that. I've put a lifetime of work into being a Sajem, but the removal of the logo would not take that away. I'd be proud of my town and my mascot no matter what it was, unless it hurt others when I wore it. I've been a Sajem for eighteen years, but I know it's definitely time for change. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Ross. Mr. Swan? Again, if I remind you to state your name and full name and address.
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great. Yeah, thank you. So this is John Swan. I'm a, I live at three fifty-four Cambridge Street in Winchester. My wife and I have lived here for several years now, and I know many of you on the school board and others that have, that are listening in or attending. And for those that don't know me or know anything about my background, I grew up on and off Indian reservation in rural Montana. I'm an enrolled member of a tribe, the Chippewa Cree tribe. I dedicated most of my, the first part of my career to working in Indian country, whether it be for a US Senator, an NGO, the National Congress of American Indians, as well as helping, found a bank owned by tribes. We were very uncreative in our name. It's called Native American Bank. It still exists. It's FDIC insured. But I've been, let's just say, around the block quite a few times in Indian country to understand perspective as well as to share some of my own lived experience. When we moved to Winchester, we were, of course, looking at the neighborhood, the schools. And after signing on our house, actually, it was, it was a few weeks after I drove past the high school for the first time. Hit me, you know, like a ton of bricks and have been obviously working with different community members since then on, on trying to understand more about the actual mascot itself, but also trying to provide some perspective. And it comes up a lot about, you know, whether it's honoring or not honoring Native folks. And I tell you from the perspective of someone that has a lived experience in Indian country that it's not honoring. And I think there's a big difference between appreciation and appropriation for your consideration. So appreciation is one of which where, you know, we really try to understand both historic contexts as well as current issues. And appropriation is one where it's kind of a, you know, taking from a culture without their permission, and especially where there's not a representative base in the community. So as a person from that community, I'm just trying to reiterate some of the points that were already raised. We have four kids that are in Winchester Public Schools. The oldest of which will be attending Winchester High School in the, in the fall. So aside from all my fears of having, you know, multiple teenagers in my house, it'll be the first time one of our kids will be walking into a school where they will have to look up and see a reminder of, you know, kind of the environment they live in. And it would be my goal, you know, as a parent and as a community member, to have them leave that school without that. And for the other kids that follow in their footsteps, they have three younger siblings, to have the same. So thanks for the time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Swan. Just a moment. It takes a second to. Ms. Norwich, you are elevated.
Hi.
Thank you for coming.
My name is Leora Norwich. Thank you for having me, and I am the Executive Director of the Network Justice here in Winchester at sixty-three Shore. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address the committee this morning on behalf of the network. The network's mission and ongoing commitment is to advance a movement for equity and inclusion here in Winchester, as well as beyond it. It's with this goal in mind particularly that I'm speaking to you this morning. As a community, we're facing a reckoning on a national scale. The agenda of your meeting today is to address how Winchester can best tackle systemic racism in our schools, including changing not only what students learn, to include a richer understanding of diversity and the history of racial oppression in this country, but also how they're learning through expanding staff, professional development, support for diversity, equity, and inclusion, and shifting the culture in Winchester Public Schools. As stated in Winchester's joint statement on police brutality and systemic racism, we have committed, together with the school, with the school committee, to acting as anti-racist, proclaiming that our community, united in solidarity across town government, schools, in places of work, worship, and learning, have zero tolerance for racism, hate, or exclusion of any kind. To further the goal of being an anti-racist community, behalf of the network, I'm urging the school committee to advance the following reforms. Institute wide-scale and sustainable curriculum changes, which include a wider breadth of history of oppressed peoples and struggles, including African-American and Indigenous peoples' history, and a stronger focus on racial and social issues as well as contemporary challenges. Ensure anti-racism, anti-racism is built explicitly into curriculum, beginning as early as elementary school level by providing the professional development and training necessary for teachers to feel comfortable to have these conversations. Sharpening the focus on relationship building, both within Winchester and in neighboring communities beyond it, developing deeper ties with offers, scholars, and teachers with diverse perspective and firsthand experience confronting the dynamics of race and racism in this country. And eradication of racist symbols in all Winchester Public Schools, specifically the Saukum mascot from all buildings as well as uniforms and student clothing. Acting together with zero tolerance for racism, hatred, and exclusion of any kind mandates the removal of Native American mascots like the Saukum, which dehumanizes and stereotypes Native peoples, misrepresents history, and our racist symbols. They harm everyone, both Native and non-Native students alike, as well as staff. They are a clear manifestation of racism in Winchester Public Schools, impacting school life and radiating into our town culture, causing divisions and exclusion. While it's not the place to outline the full rationale for removing these symbols here, we stand with statements of over a hundred, a hundred and fifteen Native American civil rights organizations and a large body of social science research. I want to add that in eliminating the Saukum, the school committee will be supporting Winchester Public Schools to uphold their commitment to the social-emotional development of all students and affirm the value of Winchester Town's human rights statement, namely that our community is granted in respect for every individual. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Norwich. Seeing no more raised hands, I'm going to move on to reading some of the written comment that we received. I will make clear that every word that I'm reading is taken directly from the letters that we received. You have the full letters in a folder, which will become a part of official part of the record. However, comments that were longer than a page, I did have to shorten so that they could follow the same guidelines that speakers have to follow. So forgive having to listen to me for ten minutes. The first comment submitted was submitted by Jeanette Kalobzy of three hundred and ninety South Border Road. It says, "ISS are part-time staff and not contracted. They work three days a week as building substitutes and float to support teachers and students as needed. They play an important role in their schools. Currently, there is no safety net for these dedicated staff members should they need to stay home due to illness, since ISS have no paid sick time. I have two concerns. For the health of everyone in the building, ISS should feel free to stay home if not well, without fearing loss of pay. Two, in worst-case scenario, if an ISS contracts COVID nineteen on the job, they should not be further punished by loss of income. It is essential that teachers stay home at any sign of illness, so the need for ISS to step in will be even greater. What protections for ISS and other non-contracted school staff, if any, are being considered? Would the town consider budgeting a certain number of paid sick days for ISS during the pandemic?" Is expected to be submitted. The next submission is from Heather Hinton at four seventy-three Washington Street in Winchester. She starts with disclaimer. Please note, I'm a resident of Winchester and the parent of a Winchester Public School student. I'm also a public leader, serving as the pastor of the Second Congregational Church, four hundred and eighty-five Washington Street, Winchester. What follows are my thoughts and do not reflect any official statement or stance of the congregation I serve. This is a lengthy document, so I'm reading a portion of it. My family and I moved to Winchester in two thousand and twelve when I was called as the pastor of the congregation here in town. One of the things that drew us to this community, in addition to the wonderful congregation I would be serving, was the school system. Excellent public education, accessible to all, is one of our family's deep-held values. But my enthusiasm for the schools in Winchester was dampened when I learned about the school mascot, the Sajem. I remember arguments about Native mascots from when I was in high school, in the late nineteen eighties and early nineteen nineties. I was stunned that we'd be living in a town where our son would be going to school where the logo of stereotypical Native American highly visible on the high school building, on uniforms and on promotional materials, some thirty years after I first learned how degrading and offensive such mascots to Native people are. So when I talked to my son about why Winchester needs to discontinue the use of Sajem as a school mascot, I will begin here. I will say, there are people who are deeply hurt by the use of our Sajem mascot. We may not understand why they are hurt. We may not think they should be hurt. They are telling us they are being hurt, and we need to listen to them. And I will urge him to learn the history of the Native people of the land, to get to know they, who they were, who they are, rather than clinging to a misguided, disrespectful icon and blazing it on a T-shirt. And I will remind him that Native Americans are still here. They are part of us. They live and work and go to school in Winchester. This is not a theoretical harm we're doing. It is a real harm. It doesn't matter whether we think it's harmful. It doesn't matter whether we think impact is big enough to warrant the cost and hassle changing size, uniforms and letterhead. It doesn't matter whether we think there is really a problem here. Next letter is from Mr. John Belair of one hundred and thirty-six Highland Ave. My name is John Belair, and I'm a rising senior at Winchester High School. I've played hundreds of games with the Sajem on my jersey. Sold merchandise to the community with the Sajem on it, had Sajem sticker on my water bottle, and I take immense pride in representing Winchester High School. However, I now acknowledge that the Sajem logo is, always has been racist and must change. Use of a Native American mascot is unethical. The red coloring, minc pronunciation, and appropriation of the word "Sajem", traditionally pronounced "Saucum", the use of a male representation when "Sua Sajem" was a woman. The fact that the Sajem logo depicts a plain Indian headdress on what's supposed to be a Massachusetts tribe leader and many other historical inaccuracies only augment the fact that the logo is not representative nor tribute. How can it be argued that the mascot is a symbol of our town's history when it is blatantly historically inaccurate? Typically, mascots are animals, such as tigers, eagles, wild cats, and making comparison to a race of human beings whose land we inhabit and who we live alongside today is insidious. The logo serves as a reminder to Native Americans of the pain they endured since Columbus first arrived on the island of Hispaniola. It is demeaning to promote a stereotype for a race of people in such a way. Consider how you would feel if your race or ethnic group served as a mascot. Many Winchester students, alumni, and parents argue that the mascot is a symbol of town pride. We can take pride in the values we associate with our mascot, community strength, bravery, school spirit, but we can no longer deny that the Sajem logo in reality misrepresents those values by devaluing Native Americans. From personal experience, I know that the logo sends a message to non-Winchester individuals that our town is unwelcoming, not just to Native Americans, but to other minority groups. The logo acts as a barrier to building the diversity that our town desperately needs. The logo undermines the great steps our town has taken to foster community. I've lived nearly my whole life as a Winchester Sajem, and I know I'll feel just as much school pride, if not more, to be a Winchester student and athlete with a more appropriate mascot. At a time when racial injustices finally come At a time when racial injustices finally come to our national forefront, we must look around our community and see what we can do to make our town more inclusive and respectful. We have been wrong in the past, myself included, but it's our duty to listen to those around us and do better. Next letter is from Ms. Karen Fagan of eleven Amberwood Drive. Dear members of the school committee, I'm writing this letter to convey my support for the removal of the Sajum mascot and imagery. I've lived in Winchester my, all my life, graduated from Winchester High School in nineteen eighty-six. My three children graduated from Winchester High School as well, and I'm a teacher in Winchester School System. As a student athlete at Winchester High School, I truly believed that I was respecting and honoring Native Americans each time I put on my uniform. I grew up with a symbol, but never thought to question it. After learning so much more, especially in recent years, I now see how very wrong I was. The mascot does not commemorate Native Americans. On the contrary, reduces them to a racial stereotype. It can be a painful reminder of their historical trauma and of the limited ways others see them. I thought we were honoring Native Americans, but we never knew anything about the people we were supposed to be honoring. I recently attended a virtual discussion on the mascot facilitated by student leaders at the high school. The three phenomenal Native American speakers taught me more about Native American history in a short time than I'd ever learned as a student. As a starting point, I learned that we have been not, we have not, that we have been saying the name Sajum wrong all these years. It is actually pronounced Saka, not Sajum. Image represents a plains Native American, therefore making it historically inaccurate for the area. Here I thought I was honoring people. In fact, I haven't said their name right all these years speaks to my lack of education. The most important factor for me is that Native Americans have told us there that we are not honoring them. A former student of mine said, "To honor means to regard with great respect." But unfortunately, Native American people feel that by using Native mascots, we are not, we are doing the exact opposite. I love my town very much and believe that everyone in the Winchester community needs to hear the message that these speakers gave. We need more awareness on education, on Native American history, so that we can truly understand the negative impacts of the mascot and imagery. I think those who want to keep the mascot really do believe they are honoring a people. If they could learn how this imagery actually hurts them and keeps them oppressed by reducing them to racial stereotypes from the past, they would feel differently. We have to be willing to learn and reflect in order to grow. We have to put in the time to work. I hope that we are willing to take, we are willing to take on this challenge. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to share my perspective. I'm going to read an excerpt from this next letter from Caroline Woodward of twenty-nine Woodside Ave. Hello, school committee, members of school committee. This letter to you all is an edited version of a post that I made on a Winchester residents Facebook page. There were a couple of adamant dissenters as expected, but for the most part, I was pleasantly surprised at the number of positive responses. And I also received several personal messages from parents and current students urging me to send this letter to you. I think our residents are tired of the ongoing argument over the Sajum, but I also want to do right by our students, especially right now when their school experience has disrupted so significantly. Some of you already know me, but for those who don't, and so you know where I am coming from, allow me this introduction. I'm a fourth generation Winchester resident. My aunt Allison Pershi-Rish, Winchester High School fifty-four, is a member of the Winchester High School Athletic Hall of Fame, inducted in nineteen ninety-six. My brothers were both WHS varsity athletes. My daughter, class of twenty-three, is a current varsity athlete and a fifth generation Winchester resident. I'm proud of my family's history and my feelings about this town run deep. I'm also embarrassed by our town's history of the using a racist caricature for its mascot despite being asked in writing twenty years ago by the Mass Commissioner of Indian Affairs to stop. I'm aware that there's a lot of debate about the use of this mascot, and there has been reluctance to change for fear of disappointing many Winchester High School alumni who hold the Sajum dear in their memories. But the tide is turning. I believe right now is the moment to make this change. Class of twenty-twenty, the perfect vision class, has been robbed of so much this year. Let's give them the gift of choosing the new Winchester mascot. Who could be better candidates to choose a mascot for our town and our school? This could be a meaningful way to honor the class that has given up so much in order to protect our public health and help of all the residents of our town. Let's give them this legacy, choosing an appropriate mascot to rally around that will make all people welcome as members of our community. Be reading excerpt of a letter from Mr. Colin White of hundred and seventy-one Swanton Street. Dear school committee members, I'm a current resident and parent of a current student in Winchester High School. I write this letter to ask you to change the Sajum name mascot and mascot for Winchester High School. Several decades, Native Americans have stated they do not feel honored by mascot, by, by Indian mascots. This includes a national campaign to remove Indian mascots, images and stereotypes in media, sports and school. There are still dozens in schools in Massachusetts of schools in Massachusetts that have Native American mascots, including Winchester. Mascots are derisive, meant to be ridiculed. Winchester Public Schools' policy language regarded regarding anti-bullying discrimination supports the removal of Winchester High School Indian mascot, maintaining respect of different cultural values, attitudes, fairness and dignity, demonstrating respect for human rights and nondiscrimination. Over the years, Winchester has had ample opportunity to change the Winchester High School mascot, yet time after time, school committee and school department referred to vocal local opinion and kept a mascot which is no longer acceptable in society, if indeed it ever was. I implore you to do the right thing by our students and by the Native American community and change the Sajum mascot once and for all. Excerpt from a letter from Ms. Shelby Meyerhoff of forty-two Winifred Way. Dear school committee members, I'm writing to ask that you end the use of the Sajum mascot in the Winchester Public School system. The Sajum mascot is damaging to American Indian students and American Indian leaders. I've asked Winchester and other towns to stop using American Indian mascots. As a white person, I've too often said nothing when I saw injustice. I've too often said something and often, too often, I've said something but done, not done anything to make a change. Why have I waited nearly five years to call on you, my elected school committee representatives, to ask you to take a stand and end the use of the Sajum mascot? Perhaps I accepted too complacently that it wasn't possible, that there was nothing anyone in town could do about this, that I as a resident couldn't do anything, that no one else could either. U.S. School Committee members can help teach my daughter, future Winchester Public School student, something very different, that each of us does have the power to act against racism, that we can admit past mistakes and correct them, that we can and must listen to marginalized people, even when doing so requires us to make difficult choices, that we can build a community that is truly welcoming and inclusive. I have a letter from Ms. Victoria Bunting of sixty Lake Street Apartment L. Dear members of the school, Winchester School Committee, I commend your aim to address systematic racism in our school through the efforts of the MASC Agenda on Anti-Racism. It is an important document to support and implement within our school, implement in our schools. I applaud the members of the committee on Superintendent assigning Winchester's Joint Statement on Systemic Racism. These are things that make me proud to be a Winchester resident. In light of these statements to systemic racism in our community, I believe it's imperative that the school committee resolve remove the current Winchester High School mascot, the Sajum. The American Psychological Association and the National College Athletic Association in two thousand and five condemned the use of Native American imagery in war and words in school mascots due to psychologically damaging impact to all young minds and the lack of respect though to those represented. This is how dismantling systemic racism works. It is not comfortable to admit that we've been using a racist image that undermines our core values. It's easier to make claims of honor and respect for the symbol we chose to embrace on our own. It is not our image nor our definition to embrace. We wish to honor and respect the Massachusetts who were here before us and are still here. We should rather update what is taught to our children at all school levels. Removing the mascot would be a huge symbolic step towards anti-racism in our public schools. Updating curriculum on all levels to include a fact-based history of Indigenous people and their continued presence is an equally important counterpart. These actions together will support the statement of the MASC Agenda on Anti-Racism, make Winchester Public Schools a place that all students and families can be proud of. Lastly, I'm going to save you all, me reading a lovely poem about anti-racism written by Rebecca Sliz from two Watson Place, because I don't think I have a poetic bone in my body. However, this is in the folder, so you all should be able to read this. And with that, I want to thank all the members of the public for both submitting written comments as well as coming here to speak publicly. And I believe that public comment is now closed and we can move on with the next agenda item.
Point of information, Brian.
Mr. Nixon.
So you read a statement from Karen Fagan and I did not find that in the folder. So I just wanted to ask if you've got access to that or maybe that came in late, if that can be in the folder, so we have it for the record.
I will make sure it's there. I actually thought it was there, so I will double check that it's there.
Thank you.
Moving on, we now move on to reports and discussion items. On the first item on the agenda is review the preliminary DESI guidance for return to school in fall. As you're aware, DESI released preliminary guidance on the same day as our meeting ten days ago. There was barely enough time to read the document and certainly not enough time to fully analyze it. Today, Dr. Evans will be able to dig deep into the preliminary guidance, what it might mean to Winchester. Dr. Evans, is this, would you like me to allow you to screen share or would you like me to try to screen share the presentation myself?
I'm fine. If you want to allow me to screen share, I'll pull it up so that'll be in a PowerPoint presentation and not a PDF. I think I have it.
You should be, you should be able to share now, I believe.
Yeah. So as we plan and prepare for the fall reopening, I think it's important to remember that this is going to be a situation that's going to require a lot of flexibility, some nimble responses and the ability to change formats for what school looks like at any given moment in time. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is working slowly, perhaps more slowly than any of us would have wished to present information and alternatives and models for the return to school for the fall. And one of the reasons it's taking so long is that they've involved a large number of stakeholders. You can see on your screen that we've got health experts and students, parents, teachers, superintendents and school administrators, nonprofits and municipal officials in a forty-five-member return-to-school working group for the DESE. They put together the information that was released a little more than a week ago that you received, and they're continuing to work hard to flesh out some elements of this, but it is slow in coming, and that makes our planning process a little slower than we'd like. The basic task that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has asked districts to do is to prioritize a safe return of students to in-person school settings to maximize learning and address students' holistic needs. Whether or not this will be possible, practical or even sustainable, is really determined by the COVID- nineteen rates in the community, rates in our district and rates in the region, which could change at any time, and so it makes our planning that much more complicated. But the clear message that all of us would like to send is that we'd like our students to return fully as soon as possible when it is safe to do so. And that safety piece is, some of the guidance has not yet come out. And so it's, it's hard for us to be patient as we, we work through the planning stages. The initial fall memo, which I shared with parents and the school committee, is intended to help us achieve this goal of safe in-person learning and included some health and safety requirements, particularly around social distancing, disinfection, cleaning and also minimum requirements for mask wearing and hand washing, et cetera. It also includes the requirement that we put forward to the DESE for their feedback, three possible learning models, and I'll go through those. And then gives us more information on upcoming DESE guidance, which should be here in the next week or two. The philosophy and approach that the DESE has taken and that we need to take is that we've got to listen to the medical experts, review the medical literature, consult with medical professionals. A lot has been learned about COVID- nineteen. A lot still remains to be learned, particularly as we have had our schools closed since the middle of March and not have had not had groups of students return and implement some of these safety procedures in our schools. We're learning from what has been done around the world and trying to draw conclusions from that. But the data continues to come in as other schools in other parts of the world are in session now. They don't break for the summer, many of them the same way we do. So we're going to continue to look at that research and the medical literature. We want to balance our community's needs for childcare so that parents can fully return to work with the academic needs of our students in terms of supporting their continued growth, their social emotional and health and safety needs. All of those balancing acts are difficult. Every one of our nearly five thousand students has different needs and our, you know, several hundred educators also have their own sets of needs. And so trying to take into account everybody's wants and needs is something that in the, in the coming probably six weeks is going to be critically important. I think it's also important to note that there's no one mitigation strategy that is recommended in the DESE guidance, but it's also several strategies taken together that will reduce the risk of transmission. So one of the things that's most important is looking at the recommendations requires us to take some steps in terms of procuring personal protective equipment and cleaning equipment and meeting with our Department of Public Works to ensure that we're able to adequately staff, clean, disinfect, monitor, et cetera. So the students and educators coming back to school safely relies on the continued use of masks and face coverings. And the studies have shown this is eighty percent effective in reducing transmission. So I'll talk about that a little bit in a later slide, but that's a crucial part of this for students, second grade and up, and all educators. Physical distancing, the aim is for six feet between individuals, but the minimum district that they're now seeing that's safe for students is three feet. And so when that's combined with the other safety measures, and so they're asking us to look at capacity in terms of all of our classrooms. I'll talk about the process we're using to do so. Handwashing with soap and water and/or alcohol-based hand sanitizer when hand washing is not available. Again, we've been reviewing available sinks, supplies, soap towels. We've purchased, pre-purchased hundreds of units for hand sanitizer dispensing. So we're looking at sort of the physical readiness for school to open with these guidelines. And finally, staying home when sick or have had close contact. One piece of the guidance that has not come out yet is what happens when someone gets sick. How long should the person who has been exposed stay home and quarantine? Who's going to do the contract contact tracing? So all of those things still need to be sent to us. The major literature, and again, continuing to learn about this as, as time goes on, from the American Academy of Pediatrics and also from the literature from other countries, schools reopening, is that schools don't have, have, don't appear to have played a major role in COVID- nineteen transmission. Only a small percentage involve school transmission and in general, based on an analysis of data from six countries, students, K- twelve students are half as susceptible than adults and when exposed are far less likely to demonstrate symptoms and if infected, may be less likely to infect others. All of these are the studies that were sent to us from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and again, we'll continue to look at the results where other schools have fully opened in other countries. They're closely tracking rates of transmission and illness in students. Obviously, the concern for us is we don't want anyone to become infected or become ill, but it is likely that will happen if we return to school even in a hybrid model. And we're concerned about the adults, the hundreds of adults who work with our students every day, and we're concerned about the parents and grandparents of our students. And so all of these we need to take into consideration. So the continuum for learning is something that we're all going to have to get used to because no matter what model we eventually implement, it's likely we'll have to move back and forth between and among models depending on the rate of infection at individual schools, classrooms in the district, in the state, in the region. And so the best scenario is that we return without restrictions. This, I think, is going to have to wait. You see, it's a green box with a arrow with a an outline not filled in. That's because until there's a vaccine and That's because until there's a vaccine and, and good treatments, that's not going to happen. So the next best scenario is in-person learning for nearly all students with new safety requirements because the goal is to get as many students as possible safely back into school for in-person learning. There will be students who will not be able to come back because they have medical issues and we'll have to make provisions for those students. The second model, the DESE, is requiring us to study is the hybrid learning model. And you've probably seen this publicized either as a students are in for one week and off the next week and have some kind of a distance learning experience in the second week while the other half of the class is in. So teachers are teaching half the number of students, but teaching all day, every day, whereas half their students are at home getting distance learning supported by someone else. And the third model is the remote learning model where everyone is at home learning remotely. And it could be, this model could be available for individual students who can't return in person for medical issues. And could happen, they're telling us at any time if we're unable to staff a school, if the community infection rate is high, that everyone at a certain school or in a certain classroom could go to remote learning for a limited period of time. So as you can see, this is a continuum. We have not made any determination about a recommendation for a model yet because we don't have all the information we need. The DESE is requiring us to submit our comprehensive fall reopening plans in August. We don't have the form yet. We don't have the format. But we are working towards this. And I'll explain the implementation of our COVID-19 planning and implementation team and who's going to serve on that and how we're going to get here to be able to submit a reopening plan. The really important thing to note is that all of the boxes in blue on this slide represent critical information for us to make decisions and that critical information has not yet been forthcoming. And I'll highlight a few of these for you. Under the health and safety requirements boxes, academic calendar considerations. There's a possibility that the state law that says we have to be in school 180 days for 900 or 990 hours could be loosened to have us in school fewer days to allow for training for staff members and teachers. We don't know whether that is possible yet, but that's important for us to let people know when their students would be returning to school. We don't have the process for handling a COVID-19 positive case in the school community in terms of guidance. When the illness first broke in the community in March, there was a lot of uncertainty. We worked closely with public health, but they were getting conflicting information from the state at that time as well. So we need a very clear process and timeline and procedure for handling that. Issues related to facilities and operations, particularly around disinfection, cleaning, exit and entry into the building, that sort of thing. We're waiting for more guidance. Some of this we can handle ourselves. Some of it, we need more guidance. Transportation is a, is a very important piece of this puzzle. We don't have guidelines for how many students can safely ride a bus and whether or not we'll be able to support that given the limited number of buses that we have. So, so it's likely that we'll have to restrict the number of students on buses. But again, we don't have good information on that yet. Remote learning resources, supports for special programs and populations. That is going to be forthcoming from the state, but we are not waiting for that. And I'll talk a little bit about some of the intense efforts that district has been putting into place for that. And finally, all the things that make school so special for our students and community members, athletics, extracurriculars, some of our elective programs, particularly music. All are in need of more specific guidelines. So we'll know what to expect and how we can keep everybody safe in the fall. So our planning efforts have focused on the things that we know for sure and that are under our control. The first is the purchasing of personal protective equipment and supplies. So we've worked with our school nurses, our nurse leader, Jen Markham, the DPW, and we've placed orders for cleaning and disinfecting supplies. We've placed orders for masks, gloves, thermometers, gowns, deep cleaning equipment, tape, signage, and vastly increased the orders for tissues, paper towels, dispensers for hand sanitizer, gallons and gallons and gallons of hand sanitizer. So at this point, we spent over $100,000 on these things. And there is some grant money that comes with the CARES Act that could offset some of these costs, but we've only purchased for the first part of the year. So as you can see, this is a pretty expensive piece of the puzzle to keep everybody safe and healthy. We've also done a survey of each classroom in the district, looking at class, class sizes, the furniture that's in those classrooms. We will complete diagrams of student seating to ensure that we know exactly how many students can be accommodated and how many of our larger group spaces will need to be adapted for student use. And so part of the planning process is physical distancing using the at least three-foot model. Hand sanitizing, handwashing. We've looked at classroom sinks, we've looked at restroom sinks. Some of them unfortunately are too close together to allow three feet. So got to mark off some that won't be used. We're going to be moving some of our paper towel dispensers to ensure that students are distant from each other when they're using sinks. And we're working to develop protocols for daily and deep cleaning with DPW. And finally, protocols for isolating and identifying staff members and students who become ill, who come to school ill and/or tracking illness as reported to us is something that will be part of this planning as well. We're also looking at at-risk staff and students. This is a tricky part of the puzzle, identifying who will need to stay at home no matter what, what personnel will be required. As you might imagine, if large numbers of staff members are at risk and cannot be at school and there are no students for them to teach because we're all fully returned, we'll have to get substitutes for those staff members. And there simply are not enough qualified, certified teachers, even if we have the budget to hire substitutes for large numbers of staff members who might not be able to be at work. This is obviously a great concern to me. Plans and protocols for intermittent school closure that results from positive cases or quarantines will have to be ready to turn on a dime and be able to do that. Physical distancing requirements. When you have large organizations with thousands of people coming through the door, like our middle and high school every day, limiting contact between students is not something that we're about. We're all about relationships. We're about the social aspect of school. This is going to change almost every aspect of that from lunch to exit to entry to transportation to large group meetings, limiting visitors to classroom, keeping students clustered together so that they are in contact with as few others as possible. All of those things are going to require immense planning. And finally, the $100,000 or so that we're getting from the CARES grant is not going to nearly cover our expenses. So that's always a concern. Where are we going to get the financial resources? The good news is, and as Dr. Alama would say, the silver lining in our lessons learned from our first foray into distance learning have taught us that it is possible to plan and implement distance learning and in-person learning that is of high quality, rigorous, aligned. And we have over 100 staff members engaged in that this summer doing really kind of inspirational work on alignment to the standards, alignment across schools and incorporation of what we know as best practice for both distance learning and in-person learning. And that summer training and curriculum development is in full swing and will continue throughout the summer. I do want to just raise my concerns about staffing levels and, and supporting students with distance learning if they're also, if we also have most of our teachers teaching in person. That is something that no other superintendent with whom I've spoken has given me a sense of confidence that we can do that well. And finally, technology. I think that there will be some expectations, particularly if we have to do distance learning or a hybrid of that for more synchronous learning. And I just want to say from the outset that we're unlikely to do a lot of synchronous learning. That's not the way we teach. It might be appropriate for a lecture in a college, but as soon as the teacher would move away from the camera to work with groups of students or assist individual students, the learning for the other students who might be at home is harmed. I think it's also important to note, we only have a handful of technology support personnel. And running a synchronous classroom with multiple cameras, audio, troubleshooting for the students at home requires two staff members at least for every session. And we are going to have difficulty having one staff member given, you know, the possibility that some at-risk staff members will not be able to be in person. So technology challenges. Our new technology director has come on board as of July 1st. He will assist. But I want to set the expectation from the outset that our capacity and our belief in synchronous learning is pretty limited. And so, so that's where we are with that. The planning coordination, team creation phase of this response has almost been concluded and we're about to start with our team meetings. We have a district COVID-19 planning and implementation team, 25 strong, will include four parents, the Department of Public Works, the Department of Health, administrators, teachers, et cetera. And this district team will first work on the response to the state, required three plans, and then help individual teams, which may or may not include school council members. Every team will have a separate, every school team will have a separate configuration that includes parents and teachers, and I hope with a high school student. And those teams will start to meet a little bit later than the district-wide team. Once we've narrowed our options, they will start working on some of the practical pieces of this plan. There's also a school committee member, Brian Bernalia, will serve as the school committee since he's the chair and the COVID-19 response team, the district-wide team. We're going to appoint four parents to this team. We've had nearly 100 applicants. Thank you very much, parent community, parent and guardian community for stepping up. It's going to be really hard to choose four people. We have many, many incredible strengths among the group who've stepped forward. And so trying to narrow that down to four is difficult, but we will be soliciting additional parent feedback. And there are opportunities for parents to serve on the building-based teams as well. There's also a district-wide health and safety team that'll be led by Ellen Whittamore that will have a teacher representative from each school and some administrators that will look at more detailed health and safety concerns that might be brought forward, like air quality, addressing air quality, movement of air, looking at the list of chemicals that are required to address the virus and how we use them and what the safety is for students and staff members, that sort of thing, getting, digging deeper into health and safety. And as we start plan for what the needs are of our students for the fall, we will communicate with both staff members and students with more surveys to get more information about their plans. We haven't sent the surveys out yet because without knowing what the options are, it's hard to get feedback. So as soon as we get more information from the DESE, we will then send the surveys. I have also scheduled an individual Zoom in the next two weeks with each school for the parent and community members of that school and a Zoom for staff members, separate Zoom for staff members to get some face-to-face feedback on what people's concerns are. And I know that those are going to be frustrating because people will say, well, what about this aspect of the plan? And I'll have to say, we're waiting for more guidance from the state before we make that determination. But at least it'll help us be sure that we've identified all the issues, even if we don't have all the answers yet. So in conclusion, what we're waiting for, for more guidelines from the DESE, it's a pretty lengthy list. It includes remote learning resources, exit and entry procedures, cleaning and ventilation, procurement, food distribution regarding our breakfast and lunch programs, required signage, transportation restrictions, including bus scheduling options, capacity and operational considerations regarding transportation. Also guidance for special education, English learner and other programs and supports. And then finally, what are the restrictions or lack of restrictions around athletics, extracurriculars and electives? And then finally, the academic calendar and whether our school year is going to be shortened or our school day is going to be shortened. So as you can see, we don't want to get ahead of ourselves before we have all of this information, but we are deep in the beginning stages of planning and coordination. I would say, before I conclude this and take any questions from the committee, that I've heard from a number of parents and community members. And really, they seem to be split into two desired outcomes. One group of parents is very strongly in favor of full in-person education with limited social distancing or other requirements, a full return to school, a full free return to school or a full return to school with some social distancing. And then another group of parents who don't feel that it will be safe under any circumstances to return to school. So it's going to be difficult to meet everybody's needs. There'll be a lot of people in the middle who are eagerly awaiting our plan. So that being said, I will open it up for questions, comments and clarification.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Before you start, I just wanted to note when we talk about our working groups and subcommittees later on, that everybody is assigned to various parent association. It would be helpful if, when Dr. Evans is giving presentations to an individual school group, if you could go and be in attendance. There are only so many of us. We can't necessarily, well, Dr. Evans will be at all of them. So we could all be at all of them too, but better for us to divide and conquer. So thank you, Dr. Evans, for what is clearly a tremendous amount of work. I know how hard we're working and we're working a fifth as hard as you are and the administration and all the teachers. As you mentioned, 100 teachers are doing professional development. They aren't up at the beach. They are working hard to bring about successful launch to the school in the fall, whatever it may look like. And I would like to ask the committee if they have any questions, but I'd also like to ask if you have a question and you don't feel like you're being called, if you could digitally raise your hand too. Because sometimes if I miss someone who has a question, I don't want to miss that. So open it up to questions. Ms. Marchand?
I couldn't find the hand right now.
Oh, you don't need to use the hand. Just only if you, only if you don't feel like I'm calling.
Oh, okay. Dr. Evans, thank you for that presentation. I have two quick questions. I'll start with the last point you were making about the parent, the different camps of the parents. Let's say our plan is to go back to school fully with some modifications. As so far, I feel like is being suggested, where everybody goes to school unless it's a medical emergency or medically vulnerable population. Will we also have a plan for those parents that choose to keep their students at home based on fear, based on their own personal preference? Will we be creating kind of a hybrid model for those students?
So that's a really good question and one for which there is, there's no easy answer. Unlike some other districts that have large numbers of support personnel, instructional coaches, coordinators, you know, I think some districts have hundreds of instructional support professionals, et cetera. We are a very leanly staff district in terms of personnel. And, and so if we have a scenario where everybody's home and everybody's distance learning, I think we can do that very well and much better than we did in the spring. If we have a scenario where we have students back to school with a few students who need to get distance learning still, I think we can support them with, you know, the very few people we have available to teach them, but they may not necessarily have a dedicated certified teacher who's taught that grade level before. And, but where it's going to be difficult is if we have a large number of community members who are expecting a robust distance learning experience, but all of our teachers are already teaching full-time. And so nobody has showed. And so nobody has shown, shown me how any district can make that work well. We can certainly, in the summer, pre-tape lessons. We can have large Zooms with, you know, a lot of students watching somebody teach something and having perhaps some interaction. But there's no capacity in a district our size to do a robust distance learning program with teachers who are dedicated to just 20 students and do that well. And so, I know that, and I have seen some preliminary plans from some other districts. I think that it is going to be difficult without knowing how many students are going to need that support to, to plan. If all of our teachers are already teaching full-time, who is going to teach those distance learning classes? And if we have a pretty high percentage of our teachers who are singleton teachers, say you're a physics teacher, and you're the only physics teacher at the high school, and you decide, I'm going, I, for my, for my own reasons, I need to stay home and teach from home. If all of your physics students are in-person learning and there's nobody for you to teach, I can't reassign that physics teacher to teach the first graders who are at home, because that physics teacher's not certified or qualified to teach those. So you can see that it is already at the face of it, a personnel, a deep personnel mismatch between who might be available and qualified and certified and ready to teach, and the students who may require that. And so, we can certainly add a few substitutes to try to cover the gap, but again, somebody in the, in the equation is going to be short-changed. We're not going to be able to offer robust distance learning and at the same time have in-person learning. And like any other pandemic, we make the best of the situation. We do our best, we'll work incredibly hard to try to be as strong as we possibly can be, but I don't want to set a false expectation that people are going to be able to say, I'd like to stay at home and I want six hours a day. And I'd like to be in school and I want six hours a day, and expect us to have enough people to match. The only scenario under which I could foresee being as efficient and effective with that approach as possible would involve, could possibly involve collapsing some sections. So say we have 20 kindergartners who don't want to come and join us, who are going to be learning from home. We collapse a kindergarten section somewhere, but those 20 kindergartners could be spread out across the whole district. And so, you know, you could still have 20 kindergartners at VO who need to be educated. I can't collapse a section there. And so it gets to be a little bit of a numbers game. It could be that we would have to reassign students to different classrooms or to different schools in order to fully use staff members the most, in the most efficient way possible, and we may have to assign more students. The other thing I think that I didn't say in the, in the PowerPoint is, we have four union groups, they all need to have contracts that match what our program is, and that all has to get negotiated. And while everybody worked above and beyond in the spring, while we were kind of learning how to do distance learning, the aspect of how distance learning is going to work in the fall is going to have to be much more prescribed around expectations for student-teacher contact, feedback, how many sessions, down to how many Zoom sessions are going to be expected, and that has to be consistent across the district. So not only, as you know, Jen says, we're building the car while we're driving it, we have to negotiate, you know, the, with the manufacturer, how it's gonna run. And so it all is complex. Certainly, we're gonna work every single day between now and the time school opens to get it right. But, you know, I just want, I don't want people to have a false sense that everybody's going to get what they want. We're gonna try to give everybody what they need, and we may have to change and be flexible and adapt as the course of the illness changes. Hope that answers your question a bit.
Yeah.
Ms. Marchand, do you have to follow up, Ms. Marchand?
Yeah. So I, I'm glad you said that, that we shouldn't create expectations of, you can pick and choose your model as if you're a college student, that these younger students need to be in front of their teacher, if that's what the guidance says. The other question relates kind of, what, what is the current, if, let's say we have an, a transformer blow or something, or a school roof collapses, or one of the more normal emergencies where a school has to shut down. Does D E S E have current guidelines that we can use kind of to start preparing for if all the teachers are out, or something like that, to kind of think about how the model will look in the future?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that's a great question. You know, we're, we're, we have a district incident management team that meets monthly, and then we have building teams that meet monthly, and we plan for things like natural disasters, or, you know, something happening to one of our buildings. We plan for intruders, we plan for safety things, but we don't plan for global pandemics. And so the difference between a situation where, in any one community, say we had a fire, knocking on wood, that we'll never have a fire, and, or a school building became unusable, we could scramble, find space, move our school, but the problem is that every other student across the Commonwealth, the country, and the world is in the same circumstance. We're all fighting for the same resources, we're all fighting for the same teachers. And so, if we had 20% of our teachers unable to teach, there aren't people out there, every other district would have the same need, you know, competing for the same teachers. And so it becomes more of a, a shared responsibility and problem that we're all in this together, and we have to sort of figure out the best pathway that's the safest.
My question is more geared towards the school days. Does that school district then have to make up those days that the emergency shutdown occurred? It's more about the length of the school year, sorry.
Yeah, so that, I think there's a good chance that they're going to ask the legislature to, to give us some flexibility around how many days we need to be in session so that we can address that, and give us more flexibility around what counts for an hour of instruction. Every year I have to submit documents that, you know, to the minute, say how many minutes of instruction our students have had to meet the state guidelines of, or requirements of 900 for elementary and 990 for secondary. So I think there will be some wiggle room. What I would say is, another local district put out a plan that said, yeah, we're not coming back at all. We're gonna be either hybrid or full distance learning, but we're not going to bring kids fully back. And the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has said, well, that's not really your choice. If the state says you have to come back, you have to come back. So I do have some parents who are saying, be bold, just say you're gonna cancel school and be remote, like, you know, Harvard has, has done. And there are some things that are under my control, and there are some things that are not, and we need state approval before we take that step. And so, and I don't want to be bold in the face of changing medical information, but I want to make the, a right plan for Winchester and Winchester families.
Ms. Bergstrom?
So, I have two questions. My first one actually leads right from what you were just speaking about, Dr. Evans. At what point, there have been a number of opportunities along the way in this, in the pandemic, where we have heard that D E S E is going to come out with guidance, and then the guidance is withheld, and they wait a little bit longer, and then we're stuck waiting for D E S E guidance to move forward. At what point do we choose to just go forward and make our own plans and adapt them to the guidance that comes out? And at what point do we wait and then have sort of more of a rush at the end? Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, I think we, I think we are making three plans simultaneously. And so, if we're not able to open and we have to distance learn, we'll be able to do that. If we are not able to accommodate all students and have to do a hybrid plan, we'll be ready to implement that. And if we're able to bring most students back with some students distance learned, we'll be able to do that. So it's my belief that by the early part of August, we'll have three firm plans for the school committee to consider, and then we'll have community feedback. What the DESE has said, what the commissioner has said to superintendents directly is, I'd like you to figure out a plan that brings all students back. That's his number one priority, that's what he feels we should do, that's what he would like us to do. If we're not able to submit a plan, if we say we can't do that, or we don't think it's a good idea, he's planning to send teams from the DESE into the district to figure out why not, and to provide additional assistance to make sure that it happens. That is what he told us. Now, if 300 districts in the state say we can't open, we don't have the capacity, we don't think it's a good idea, I think, you know, that obviously the DESE lacks the, just like we do, they don't have endless resources to go in and swoop in and help us figure it out. But he is fully expecting that if, if it's a space issue, that we will use each and every available space, including lobbies, the cafeteria, the gymnasium, et cetera, and make those into classrooms so that we can spread kids out as much as we need to. He has said he'll come and drop modular classrooms if we need them, or help us pay for additional spaces in other places, like church, you know, meeting halls, or, and so I think they're pretty serious about wanting to get kids back to school for a variety of reasons, and we all want that desperately, but not unless it's safe. And so, at what point are we going to make that determination? I think we've got a pretty tight timeline. I have scheduled weekly meetings with the district COVID implementation and planning team. It may be in the next week or two, once we get further DESE guidance, that we might be meeting more frequently than that is that team. And I'm hoping that by early August, we'll have a firm plan. But certainly, we're prepared to go full distance learning to start the year, if that's the only thing that makes sense, until we're able to all be together. So I'm not concerned that we won't have a way to have school. I just don't know if we'll have all the logistics in place to make everybody feel comfortable sending their students back to school, and the teachers coming back to school, and negotiating the labor agreements to govern the three different conditions under which we could move at any time, which makes this all much more complicated. And parents who are very concerned about, you know, what they're going to be doing in the fall because they have to work outside the home. By the way, parents who work inside the home work really hard, too. So, we recognize that when I say working parents, everybody's a working parent, but some people need to leave the home or can't supervise their children during the day for distance learning. So, I don't want to, I don't want to short-change any, any parent or guardian. So, so your first question, Michelle, is, when will we just take the leap and do it? I'm hoping early August, we'll have a more definitive plan and be able to make a decision.
Great, thank you. And then my first, my second question is a follow-up to something that you had said earlier in your presentation, and I'm not sure I heard you correctly, or that it's not, might not be what you meant. When you said, we don't believe in synchronous learning, you mean we don't believe in full six hours a day in front of a computer synchronous learning? Not that if we would go back to remote learning, that it wouldn't include some synchronous time with instruction, it just wouldn't be, it wouldn't replicate the exact school day?
Right, so I, thank you for giving me a chance to clarify that, because what some parents have advocated for is, why can't you just put a camera in every classroom and let my child watch from home for six hours a day? And there are a number of, you know, issues related to that plan that don't make sense. Our teachers move around the classroom regularly. It requires a lot of technology to have cameras where kids could actually see and hear from home. And then, there needs to be an adult to interact with that student at home, take questions, have conversations. And so having a single teacher try to teach both remotely and in-person at the same time doesn't fit our instructional model well. And so when I say the expectation for synchronous learning, I think there's an expectation that, you know, children will just sit in front of a computer and watch what happens in a classroom. And we don't have the capacity, even if I were to put computers in the classroom, to support the interaction that those students would need. We don't think that's a good model. We're moving away from the traditional sort of lecture discussion kind of instructional model. And what that looks like in a classroom where everyone has to be, you know, socially distanced is another challenge. So, I don't want to set the expectation that I'm just gonna set cameras up in classrooms and have students get their education just by watching TV.
Even if, even if we go to full remote learning, that wouldn't be the expectation.
Well, full remote learning is not, it can be synchronous, because the teacher has Zooms or Google meets with students, where students are learning together at the same time with their teacher. But when I say synchronous, what I mean is, people who are removed learning at the same time as people who are in-person. So thanks for the chance to clarify that. I hope that answers it.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions from the committee? Mr. Nixon?
I thank you, Brian. Judy, quick question. I'm curious who, I know the slides at the end of your presentation were really sort of tailored towards us. Who, who kind of put that core package together? There was a lot of detail there.
So I did, the original six or eight slides are from the DESE that put that original slide presentation, but all of the planning and implementation steps, I made those slides.
Okay, so, thank you for that. I'll just make the observation in that the photo on Slide 2 of adults without masks sitting by, side by side, is not how we socially distance, and I'm glad that came from D E S E and not us, and the irony is not lost on me. Judy, if, on your Slide 13, there are two things I want to talk about, and I don't know if you want to sort of have that at the ready, but I appreciate your saying that the call about going back or not is really coming from the state, and right now, the message is, that's, that's not on us to make that call. But it seems to me there are sort of two important aspects of our operations that really do lie with us, and they're important from, they're significant from a budget point of view, they're significant from a risk of infection, a vector point of view, as the ID folks call it, and that's both transportation and athletics. So I wanted to just kind of throw back out there to the committee. I think at a recent meeting, Ms. Marchand and I were kind of openly questioning, or asking us with you to really kind of question, what does yellow bus look like next school year? And so I want to remind the committee that our obligation for busing is really pretty small, because it's for those students who live outside that, I think it's a two-mile radius, right?
Right.
Of their school. So, I think Ms. Marchand described it as a luxury, I might call it a convenience, but we're pretty close on that. It's, it's certainly a significant expense for us. I think you're 100% right, there's no way to social distance on a yellow school bus. And so while we're aware that certain colleges, universities, both public and private, as well as some private schools, for like, grade six through 12, are, are making some schedule changes now based on the season. So their fall is gonna look different than their winter, and who knows what spring looks like. I would suggest that while it's cold and there's snow on the sidewalks, the need for public, the need for a yellow bus might be different than it is in the fall when schools open. I'm certainly open to, and would encourage us to have some conversations, Judy, with you and Ellen, about really questioning what kind of yellow bus transportation we need to be providing in September if we're open, given the proximity of students to school. So I would just, I would just throw that out there. I don't, I don't see it as a binary thing. It's not like we either run the system like we always did, or we don't. There may be a hybrid, there may be something scaled down, and the sooner that we can kind of get at that, the better. The other piece I just wanted to ask about was athletics. So athletics are important, certainly to our student athletes, for whom competition is so important, and we heard from some of them in public comment this morning, which was terrific. I'm also concerned about athletics as a, as a sort of source, as vectors and risks of infection, not just to the students, but to the coaches. And so I think at the last meeting, Judy, you had mentioned that the MIAA would be giving guidance on athletics. On your Slide 13 this morning, it indicates the guidance may be coming from D E S E. And I don't know if the committee is aware, but literally yesterday afternoon, the Massachusetts Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs just released guidance for athletics, and it includes schools. And what they have done for Step 1 of Phase 3, the state has basically broken out youth sports into three levels, high-level risk of infection, moderate level, and low level. And so, they've also defined four different levels of what they call play. So individual, non-contact skills and drills is Level 1, Level 2 would be practices, no scrimmages, Level 3 is games, Level 4 is tournaments. And what the state has basically done just yesterday is said, depending upon the level of risk of the sport, you can participate in more or fewer levels of play. And they've gone further to say that low-risk sport would be things like swimming, golf, where there's just substantial social distancing. There's a long list of moderate-risk sports that include field hockey, non-contact lacrosse, which would be the girls' game. But for high-risk sport, that includes soccer and football. And so what the state just said, you know, yesterday on July 6th is, not only no games, no contact practices. So, I know So I know, and Judy, I don't want to, I'm sort of putting you on the spot. At the last meeting, you were, you were kind of opining about the likelihood of, of either fall sports or certain fall sports. But I guess having said all that, I, I really have a question about who will be the authority having jurisdiction in terms of issuing guidance for districts? But at the end of the day, we as a district, I believe, can still make the ultimate decision and determination. I think the detail that just came out yesterday from the state is, is thick. There's a lot of information there. But that's not from DESI, and it's not from the MIAA. But given that it's now July 7th, when I see what the restrictions are on things like soccer and football, I just have a flashback to your comments at the last meeting, Dr. Evans, and I'm, I'm struggling to imagine a scenario where we're running certain fall sports. And to the earlier comment, I think it was, I think it was Xena about, you know, framing expectations, and we don't want to give families sort of the false expectations of what they can expect. Perhaps we should be starting some, some hard conversations about athletics now and maybe not waiting for the state. So you have any thoughts about that?
Sure. And Ellen can weigh in, too, because I know she stays close with Mark Maria on this. The DESE is working closely with the governor's office and with the MIAA. What governs whether or not we'll actually have sports, where there are real games and tournaments, et cetera, the, the MIA will determine that based on the guidance from the DESE and the, and the governor's office. And so the DESE is going to give us general guidance, which could change season to season, depending on the course of illness and what we learn about contact and, and student risk. And so the, it would be premature for us to announce anything until the, the state comes out with some more. But I'll ask Ellen, if you could jump in on this one, that would be great.
The MIA does have a task that is made up from superintendent, as well as athletic directors and some coaches, and they are working very closely, I believe, with DESI on formulating plans for the fall at this time. And I was anticipating in the next week or two. I'm at least initial. And then that's in line with the conversations that Mark Maria has had with his colleagues as well.
And so am I, am I right in assuming that any recommendations they come out with at least won't be in conflict with what was just released yesterday?
I can't speak to that. I mean, the I A has jurisdiction over high school athletics in the Commonwealth, so I, I don't know if it will be, it'll be guidelines that are tighter. I don't know.
Okay. And then could I just ask either Ellen or Judy thoughts on, you know, transportation and having conversations about the scope of busing, at least maybe in the fall, if it has to change when the weather gets cold and bad?
So I've already had initial conversations with Mr. Devine of North suburban regarding our yellow bus transportation, and he and I will be having a meeting the week after next to, to discuss what we're supposed to have guidelines regarding. I believe Dr. Evans later this week was what the initial thought was we would have, and then Mr. Devine early next week to talk about what those initial guidelines are going to look like, as well as just different models getting prepared for December. We've already had conversations about what some possible scenarios would look like, and he's also working on some, you know, just model that he thinks could very well work within the town. He's been here a long time, has a really good grasp of what our roots look like, as well as our student populations in terms of ages, especially at secondary with, with the sixth graders. So I'm quite certain that he'll have some great, great feedback as well as advice for us as we move forward.
I may just get you back on.
I guess my, my closing, if I can, Brian, my closing thought, I guess, is just simply this, that we, we heard it again today in Dr. Evans's presentation. There are a lot of unknowns still ahead of us. Many of them will have costs associated with them. We subsidize our yellow buses. So there, there's a cost for that. So I'm, I'm not suggesting we eliminate yellow busing entirely, but I'm just suggesting if we're going to scale back in some way, separate and apart from the guidelines, you know, the guidelines may come from the state to tell us, well, if you do it, here's how you do it. It seems to me this is a conversation for us as a committee to be having with you and with Dr. Evans about whether we want to be doing it either at all, or if we scale back, what does that look like? Because if we do scale it back, there would be some cost savings, which is not necessarily money that just goes into the bank, but money that's likely going to go directly towards others expenditures associated with the COVID response and environmental concerns and PPE and so forth. So I, I just, I'd hate for us to be in a position, let's say, in early spring, where we're having to go to the finance committee and ask for a reserve fund transfer, we call a special town meeting, because we're out of money. That's only happened once in the past 15 years, and it's early enough that I would like to think we can do some planning to try to avoid that.
So before I, Ms. Bollinger, if you don't mind, if I just going to quickly want to follow up, I wouldn't, would rather I've led others to ask questions, but since you asked about busing, I just wanted to point out that I think that it's a feedback loop that's going to be a fairly complicated feedback loop because if we can only have so many people on a bus, or if people choose not to take buses, but we have the same number of buses, then we'll have to charge more for those buses. And if we charge more for the buses, then perhaps fewer people will take the bus because it's now no longer, or for a hybrid learning model, which is every other week, people will want to pay half as much, but of course, that doesn't pay the bills. So I just wanted to comment that I think it's a feedback loop. I think savings are few and far between if we do any busing, unless ultimately people who take the buses pay the full prorated share that we normally pay of busing. I could see it being an expense. I don't see a lot of savings, but I just want to point that out, my, my opinion on that. Ms. Bollinger, I believe you had a question. I sort of cut you off. My apologies.
No, no worries. Thank you. I just had a question, Dr. Evans, from the commissioner's initial guidelines. He had talked, or he had just mentioned federal funding, federal grant funding that's being provided. And I was just wondering if there are any updates in the amount that comes to Winchester?
Sure. So Ellen can weigh in on this. I know that she, you know, the thing, the thing I think that people need to recognize is how hard we're working to stay in constant communication with other districts, with the DESE, with MABA, with Masbo, with, with all kinds of other organizations so that we can take advantage of friends if they crop up, applying for every grant that we possibly are eligible for, and looking at what other districts are doing. The SCEN Collaborative Board of Directors, which is our educational collaborative, I chair that board. We're meeting again this week just to share strategies for distance learning, for what the three plans look like, for what people have come up with. Similarly, Senator Lewis's offices are making an opportunity for school committee members and districts, the districts he represents, to meet directly with the commissioner and senior staff at DESE to, to ask these questions. So behind the scenes, we are, you know, trying to stand on top of what Mondays are available. The initial guidance on additional grant funding was pretty vague. What has come out since has been a grant for, a competitive grant for technology. I believe we're not eligible, and Jen can weigh in on this as well. I believe we're not eligible for that because it really is designed to provide funding for internet access and devices for communities where the students are much more disadvantaged. And we have adequate resources to provide technology to our existing students. So that's, so that's one source of funding that's not available to us. Ellen, are you aware of anything else about any other grants that has been forthcoming in the last few days?
So E-Rate, there has been some, some changes in some proposed modifications that would allow districts to be able to E-Rate the hotspots, as well as internet connectivity. So that was put out through Masbo. The Masbo notebook I get every couple of days with updates. I'll be researching that today. I did see something come across about a potential additional revenue for districts to offset COVID costs. And I saw that late last night, so I'll be looking at that today.
So the other areas where we could incur substantial costs that we're kind of anticipating managing in the fall have to do with, so the main additional cost is really staffing. I think we can manage our masks and, you know, hundreds and hundreds of gallons of hand sanitizer. And we can even support DPW with, you know, the cleaning supplies, and we've ordered from FY20 additional, you know, misters to disinfect rooms, and we really are planning ahead on that. So the sort of the stuff, the physical aspect of this, I think we can manage financially. What could be very, very challenging is staffing. If we have large numbers of staff members who are ill and we need substitutes, or they're not able to teach, or there are no students who match what their skill sets are, and we have to hire additional substitutes, that could quite quickly run into millions of dollars. And so that is my big concern. That's why I haven't slept, you know, more than two hours a night for months. Managing the staffing costs are not likely to come with federal grant money. At the same time, the legislature is still wrestling with how much chapter 78 they're going to give us and how, how that's going to be allocated. Right now, we're on a 112 budget. Still don't have the state budget. And the other areas of potential significant deficit would be food service. If we go on a hybrid or students are doing bag lunches and purchase fewer lunches, the food service could quickly, I think Ellen did a projection, could quickly come into the hundreds of thousands of dollars in deficit. And unlike other districts where it has run in the red and the districts have had to, you know, supplement that, it's really been an operation that has been self-supporting through students buying lunches and breakfast. And so if we have to change the way we do lunches, which is almost certain, or if we fully distance learn, the, the loss of revenue for the food service program is going to require us to make up some of that difference. Ellen is already planning for some of these eventualities by keeping reserve funds at healthy balances so we can offset some potential losses. But Brian is right. The yellow bus service could run us into a deficit pretty quickly. We still haven't set the fees for bus transportation. We haven't sent out the applications for bus passes because we don't know if we're going to run buses, and if we do, how many students can run on it? So lots of logistics. I don't want to make people unduly concerned. We have a very strong central office team. You know, we've got, see all the faces here on the Zoom with an assistant superintendent and a director of special education and HR person, Jason watching out for, working with the school nurses and counseling health and wellness. And so, and then Ellen for operations and finance. So we have a strong team. We have principals who are working hard. Jen and I met with the five elementary principals yesterday to do some planning. It's a daily planning effort, and we're expending, you know, hundreds and thousands of hours on this, and we will do our best to get this right, but it is daunting. But we're not alone. Every other district's in the same boat, and so we're working with them to try to figure it out. But, but there, but there are some potential hard decisions that will have to be made around food service, athletics, busing, sort of ancillary to the primary education and academic piece that, that the surveys will help tell us, that the Zoom meetings will help tell us, and that aligning that with the DESE guidance is going to be crucial.
Are there additional questions? So I have a weedy question that you may not have an answer to, but I think it's just something to think about as we move forward. The DESI guidelines state a three-foot distance at all times. However, most guidance is to stay a certain distance apart when, for a certain period of time. It's usually 10 minutes. You can be in, the reason lines are markers is because you might stand in line for 10 minutes, but when you walk past somebody on the street, you keep your distance, but the three or six-foot distance is not required. What you mentioned, something about sinks and having to close off some sinks, a sink that someone is washing their hands at for 45 seconds, hopefully to at least 20, maybe 30 or 40 seconds, but it still falls well below the 10-minute of exposure that when you go somewhere and they say, have you been exposed to someone for great, less than, some distance for greater than 10 minutes? So as we get more guidance, I would love to just make sure we're thinking about that correctly and that it truly is all times, or is it simply a exposure and time? And again, I don't have, don't expect an answer, just an open-ended question I think we should be thinking about because we need all our sinks if we want our kids washing their hands. So to close a sink, well, means our kids are lined up outside the bathroom to wash their hands, and so they're exposed longer there. So I just, it's, again, it's a weedy question, but doesn't necessarily have, demand an answer now.
Yeah, no, no, I, we have thought of this. What we're trying to do is make it as clear as possible because our students and our teachers are not geared for a socially-distanced education. So we've purchased devices that, you know, have taped in them, that you can mark one-way passages, say, at the high school, sort of up and down staircases, you know, one way to limit students passing each other. We plan to mark, if we are able to return, we've planned to mark every desk in, in the location about where it's going to go on the floor, and if there are large tables, where are those students allowed to sit? In the cafeteria, you know, if there's an eight-person rounder, we're going to mark the four seats where they can sit to, you know, be socially-distanced. It's, I'm getting questions from parents about things like, well, what if the student next to my student takes off his mask? Are you going to tell me? I, I think we'll all have to learn from this. And one way we're going to learn is, kids were always running a very small summer camp at Ambrose School with, you know, under 30 students. Ellen, is that what it was? Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Right around there.
Right around there. So what we're going to do is meet with them frequently, go over and watch from a distance and, and make sure how are students doing wearing masks? How are you doing with marking the spaces? What about hand washing? What, how are all the procedures working? We're kind of learned from them. And as we gradually later in the summer, perhaps bring back some in-person special education services or evaluations, you know, how are those going? And so it's a, it's a data collection time for us. But no, you're right, Brian. I think there are a lot of people who say there are conflicting opinions about is six feet enough? Is three feet enough? What about the teacher? How many different adults could be in the classroom? What about recess? What about times during the day when you can take your mask off? And across the world, there are some schools that are fully open with no masks. And then there are other schools where you've probably seen the picture, where kids have masks and they're in a bubble that's sort of created out of plastic around them. So they're kind of in a room, but with a, a cube, a plastic cube around them. So there, so we'll be looking closely at what the impact has been for those students who are in those, you know, the, the full spectrum of full socially-distanced and all the way not, and see where we stand. And until we actually try it, I think we're not going to figure it out in advance and not figure out every wrinkle, but we'll do our best to, you know, look at the research. And it's only a few sinks that have that issue. They're just, it's a couple of small bathrooms with three sinks right next to each other, where we just thought it would be better to keep the kids at the two ends. Most of the sinks have sinks at the two ends and, and not one in the middle. And so and a lot of individual elementary classrooms have sinks, and so kids will just wash hands in their own classrooms. But, you know, the majority of students, I think, will be using hand sanitizer very regularly throughout the day. And, you know, lots of procedures and, and logistics. We, we're a big operation with, you know, 500 students and something like 800 employees to count all the coaches and everybody. So there are a lot of issues to negotiate over the next seven weeks before we figure this out.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Ms. Berks, do you have another question?
Good question. Dr. Evans, I noticed in the DESI guidance we initially got, there was some guidance about bringing special education students that were high-needs back full-time, even if we would go to a hybrid program. And then this week, DESI released their sample classroom layouts of what a three-foot apart classroom would look like. And it struck me, both thinking about the special education guidance and the, looking at those classrooms, that the way the classrooms are set up are kind of counter to everything that we have tried to aim for in public education in terms of flexible seating and availability of students to move throughout the classroom and to be able to accommodate not just students with special needs in terms of, you know, accessible access, but just the freedom of movement. And maybe this is a question for Pam Gerard as well. How is the special ed department working with the general education department to try to remain within those safety guidelines if we go back full-time? And also sort of meet the needs of the students socially and emotionally that we know is right for kids about being in school?
Yeah, and I'll let Pam weigh in on any aspect of this that she can help with. I mean, this is something, and Jason, Levine, who's, who's also in attendance here and is part of our central office team, it's something we ask at every meeting that we have of our central office team, is how can we keep kids safe, have classrooms places that are socially-distanced and easy to disinfect and clean? How can we use a full inclusion model, but yet limit the number of adults who are in the classroom so as to keep everybody safe? It really is contrary to a lot of the things we believe about great education. But in a pandemic, the first priority is keeping everybody alive and healthy, and the second priority is educating them and meeting their social, emotional needs. And so we recognize that school will look and feel different in the fall, but we're really hopeful that it'll only be a few months, and then there'll either be great treatments or more data around the risks to students in schools and/or a vaccine that'll let us get back to business as usual. Because we don't want this to look like school looked when I was in school, where the desks were bolted to the floor and you never left your desk, and you never talked, and you weren't allowed to talk to another student. And so Pam, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add. We've looked at all of the specialized spaces for our specialized programs, and we expect under any circumstance, if the parents are comfortable and the students are healthy enough to be there, that we'll be able to accommodate all of the special education students back nearly full-time, regardless of any other.
I would agree with that, Judy. I think that it's going to look different. I think to Michelle's point about the efforts that we've made to really think about inclusion and having kids present in their learning. This current situation feels like it's bringing us back decades. But the catch is, we, you know, what we will do to get our kids back to look, it's going to look different, but I'll take having them back and then trying to kind of figure that piece out. We have been working, and I mean, I know that, you know, you guys are tired of hearing us say we're waiting for DESI. We are waiting for DESI again to come back. We were supposed to have a meeting scheduled this week with the associate commissioner, and to date, we've got nothing, and, you know, time is ticking. Our plan is to support bringing back kids, all of our learners. What can we do? How can we do it? And we're just, we're waiting.
And I guess I would also, as we go forward, urge you to continue to think about how we continue to sort of de-stigmatize the push-in services in a model like this where we may not be able to pull out a mixed ability, small group, and not identify which children are receiving special education services or being pulled out significantly from the classroom.
Correct. We're waiting actually for guidance on some of that, whether or not staff is going to be allowed to go into classrooms or whether or not students are going to be allowed to actually leave classrooms. There's been contradictory information about both, and what will this look like? Additionally, there's concerns about some of our staff who go between buildings. What does that look like? And how are we handling that? And to Chris's point about the transportation, special education transportation is a mandate, and what will that look like? And so we've been, some of our out-of-district programs have started to return to in-person support. We do actually have some students right now who are being transported to their schools, and we've got very significant safety protocols and checklists with NRT and the schools that we're working to kind of see where this goes. It will absolutely be different once, once and when things are up kind of back to capacity. And so there's some very significant concerns. Judy speaks about staffing. Very significant concerns if I have staff that are out, that have certain certifications that are required for teaching. And additionally, what happens with vehicles? If, you know, if a vehicle is full with 13 students, and I'm now down a half or a third of that, the fleets don't have enough buses, quite honestly, to run. And so, you know, even with a staggered time, what is that, what's that impact on a school day for students? So there's a lot that we are waiting for to kind of wrap our heads around next steps. But the flip side of this is that, you know, we've done a pretty intense, you know, Judy and Ellen and the principals have watched buildings and measured space. I've counted staff and students. I've counted, you know, to the best-case scenario, masks and face shields, gowns and gloves, I mean, every possible scenario that we can possibly think about. I'm afraid that I'm going towards a hoarder or creating like a hoarder tendency. I keep coming back to Ellen, you know, do we have enough? Do we have, you know, have we, where are we at? But even some of the expectations with what works with masks, I mean, they're talking about masks, but face shields and masks, that seems to be changing too. So we're still, we're trying to order and kind of be in front of constantly what we think are going to be needs and issues. And really, what it comes down to from kind of our more specialized populations is how close can we bring it back to what we knew? And maybe that's good, maybe, you know, maybe out of this, there's, you know, Jen has been the one that has been reminding us about kind of there are silver linings to, you know, to look at some of this. But, you know, our goal is really, you know, how much can we bring back to kind of what we knew was working?
Right. I think Michelle's point about not stigmatizing students is an important one. And bears just reminding, we have approaching 900 students with diagnosed disabilities in the district, 900. Several hundred students who are English learners. Many hundreds of students who receive reading support. And so the number of students who are used to acting with a variety of adults every day to get additional support in an inclusion model makes it very difficult for us to support them without having several different adults joining the classroom every day for periods longer than 20 minutes. And so we're trying to determine how best to manage that by clustering students with similar needs or perhaps, you know, relocating some of the specialists so they only work with two classrooms, moving people across the district. So it is a very complicated model, but it's not a small number of students. It's, you know, nearing 20% of our students or 25% of our students receive additional services for a variety of things. I just want to remind everybody about that.
Thank you. Mr. Nixon, I see another question.
I just have a follow-up for Pam. Pam, I'm assuming that our out-of-district placement facilities are all still prepared to welcome students in the fall for whom they have assignments? In other words, we're not hearing from anyone that we don't know that we can take them, right?
No, I've only heard of one school, one program, that had some very significant staffing issues. We do not have a student there, so right now, all of our placements are opening.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions, thank you, Dr. Evans. Thank you, Ms. Gerard. Thank you for all the work you're doing. This will be an agenda item for probably forever. Not really. Hopefully, hopefully just for a couple next more weeks. And with that, I'd like to move on to the next item, which is a report on capital planning. Dr. Evans, I believe you're the lead on this. Would you like me to, or do you want to share the slides?
Yeah, let me see. I can just scroll down to it. You know what it is? It's landscape on here, so it's not in a format.
I will do my best to see if I can do this. I'm simply.
If you can pull it up as a document, that would be great.
I just want to see. So you tell me if I see now.
Perfect. That looks great. That looks great.
Okay.
You could enlarge it maybe if you want, but.
Uh, okay. Wait, wait. There.
There you go. Look, you're an expert.
Okay, excellent.
You must have a doctorate and an engineer.
First time to trump. Some, something like that. Or I have a Mac.
Or you have a Mac, one or the other. Okay, so this was actually, I want to thank Mr. Nixon, the DPW. Both Jay Gill and Pete Lawson and Ellen and I met with Chris Nixon to review the capital improvement program for the next five years. This is only a preliminary document. The recommended rankings are mine, but I'm not wedded to any of them. Certainly, it's a school committee vote, not at this meeting, but probably at the next meeting to prioritize this. Our main concern in presenting this to you was bringing you up to date on where we were on some of the projects and asking for your feedback or questions about what should have been included and was not included in this document. So in way of introduction, just a couple of reminders. You're not going to see much for Morocco on this plan because we have begun the process of engaging with the firm to look at Morocco's systems and reprioritizing. You will see that we've got a placeholder for the Morocco roof on here, but it, some other system may well rise to come earlier in the plan. And so, so that piece of this capital improvement program request won't be in place until the Morocco needs are identified as to what would need to be designed this year, what would need to be funded as a design this year for funding for the following year. The other thing that is not fully complete on this list is Parkhurst. And I know that COVID and the pandemic kind of put a halt to school committee discussions about how we're going to respond to the lack of space in the district once some of the building projects start coming online in FY '22 and '23 before the Lynch School is rebuilt and additional classrooms are found there. And so some happenstance and good planning, I think, has allowed us to make many program improvements at Parkhurst, many facility improvements at Parkhurst, including the installation of the elevator, which is on track to be completed in the early fall. The downstairs at Parkhurst, Ellen has worked with some FY '20 budget money to upgrade the phone system and put in wireless access points so the downstairs of Parkhurst would be ready for occupancy. The two modular classrooms at Parkhurst where the floors had failed completely, new floors were installed there and in the adjacent hallway with FY '20 money as well. And so what remains at Parkhurst, to open it as a school or school space should it be needed, is some accessibility work that we had identified preliminarily as costing about $100,000 or so, and that we would likely be able to fund from a regular budget. We will not be using Parkhurst for traditional classrooms, as far as I know, for this year, barring any unforeseen circumstance. But it is possible. We could need to house students at Parkhurst next fall. And it's likely we would start with preschool students. But watching numbers closely, and at the next meeting, I'll give you an enrollment report. I remain very concerned about enrollment at Lincoln School. We have over 20 students pre-registered, additional students pre-registered from Lincoln School in grades one through five in the fall, for the fall. It might be 24 students at this point. It's far and above any of the other elementary schools, but we've got over 60 additional students coming to us from a variety of private schools, including St. Mary's, and moving from other countries or other states or local communities who've pre-registered, 60 students just at the five elementary schools. And so the number of registrations that continue to come to us each year surpasses our existing student population. And as you know, we are now more than completely out of space at Lynch School, and in the fall, the addition of the classroom has put music back on the stage, and we're completely out of classrooms at Lincoln School as well. So the only way to get more classrooms is either increase class size, which in the age of COVID, we don't want to do, or find additional classrooms at another site. Parker seems to be a good interim site. And we'll come forward with a plan for what that might look like for the, not for this fall, but next fall in the coming days. And so on the capital plan then, one thing that we did when we put the elevator in was add a little bit of additional capacity to upgrade the electrical system. But we still need, it's still a building that has an original electrical system, you know, with two plugs in a big classroom. The way we use technology now, we need more access to an upgraded electrical system. And so I'm recommending this engineering study at Parkhurst that we had planned to continue to go forward with that, and then at some point to upgrade the electrical service, possibly in FY '23. The second thing that's on this list is the design for Ambrose Roof. This is a DPW recommendation that we need to get ready to replace the roof at Ambrose, and so that's on the list. Also, something carried forward from previous years and listed as priority number three is district-wide flooring carpet replacement and abatement in selected classroom areas. One of the things that was identified at Morocco School was that much of the flooring was in need of replacement in the carpeted areas. That's true in some of our school buildings. Many of our school buildings only have tile, which is great, but some of them need some tile repairs as well. And so we wanted to have a placeholder number in here to do this over a number of years. And so that's why that $100,000 is there. There are several classrooms at Parkhurst that have very old carpeting that we could use in a pinch without replacing it, but at some point, the whole rest of the building has had abatement and replaced flooring in every other room except, I think, four classrooms. And so at some point, we need to do that to make the building whole. Could be used in the short run, but in the long run, it needs to be replaced. We've been talking for several years about McCall masonry restoration and replacement. If this is all an exterior facade issue and also the stairs leading into the auditorium, we need a design and a plan for that. It's both a safety issue and an aesthetic issue that needs to be addressed. Similarly, a similar allocation was made for Lincoln School, and that's in progress now. So we need to make a plan for how we're going to fund the repairs to McCall. This is separate from the building project. The building project actually addressed some exterior issues like sidewalk repair. And so the area where the new addition is coming in and in the rear of McCall is in good shape, this is the front entrance to McCall that needs some attention from the masonry. And then on the next page, Brian, if you could scroll. For years, we've been, DPW has been dealing with drainage and grass issues at Lincoln School. It's been on the list. It's been a low priority. There's fairly high costs. We've thought about putting in a play field that is turf at Lincoln to address those issues. It's a very small playground, and it quickly gets muddy and a mess because it can't be properly drained. They've reseeded and resodded it, and it gets a lot of heavy use, and it's something that in the long run needs to be addressed. And then we've got a placeholder for the Morocco roof design because we know that that's going to need to be replaced before Morocco gets replaced. So that's on there, but again, as I said, that could be replaced by something else. And finally, I think on page three, nothing for this year. So the good news is, the total ask is somewhere in the range of half a million dollars, which is far less than we typically ask for. We're kind of in a transition year, having just concluded the middle school project or just about to conclude the middle school project very successfully, you know, before its anticipated completion date and far under budget. The town has funded major projects for safety adjacent to the school, both on the front and the rear of McCall. And the, at the high school, the high school project is substantially complete, but still dealing with some warranty issues mainly related to installation of things on the roof and a ventilation, new ventilation replacement system in the wood shop. There are some sort of continuing facility issues that are very typical of post-construction at the high school. And the fact that the Lynch School And the fact that the Lynch School has been approved for a replacement or renovation addition kind of puts off some of the major systems things there because the school will be replaced by 2025. So, I think overall, it's a reasonable plan and I, you know, welcome your feedback about the prioritization. And as I said, this is my best guess, but certainly Chris Nixon stays very close to this as a member of the capital planning committee and was involved in this discussion. And Chris, if there's anything you want to say at this point to further inform the committee, I'd welcome your comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Evans. I'd be happy to. So, this was a most interesting capital discussion this year for a variety of reasons. You know, the whole capital cycle this year has been postponed somewhat, given our postponed spring town meeting and our district's focus on COVID-related matters. But also the fact, as Judy mentioned, we now have an architect looking at the Morocco School. So, we are eager to see the outcome of that study as well. So, there was, there was a lot of discussion here. I appreciate Dr. Evans' comment. You know, these priorities, the ranking, if you will, is hers, not necessarily a reflection of the group. And I think, I would say I'm totally on board with what is listed as the top priority, which is the McCall work. It's not just an aesthetic issue. Judy's right. It is a safety issue. This is a historic building. We're talking about the facade of the original 1932 building that continues to deteriorate. This has been something we've been looking to address for some time. So, I do feel strongly that's something we need to push for. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna zoom a little, little higher though and just make, make a few comments. Let me maybe just start with Lincoln because that's an easy one to get to. So, if the committee's not aware, I think we've had some discussions about this in the past. The, what architects and engineers call the flatwork at Lincoln, flatwork, meaning walk-off pads, walkways, all the exterior stairs, those paved surfaces, which are, I think, without exception, concrete, not asphalt, require proper site prep. They require foundations and without them, they settle and they crack, they move. And this has been a problem that Pete Lawson and DPW have been chasing for years now. That work at Lincoln is about 20 years old and in some areas, we've had settlement of over two inches. That not only leads to failure of the work, but you can have a condition where when it rains, the water no longer drains away from the building. It drains towards the building and that's going on. We also find we have ADA violations because we have fall and trip hazards. And so, while DPW has really made great efforts to try to, I'll say in air quotes, repair some of these conditions, it's really been like pushing a rope for them because they have determined, Pete's been able to determine that in many areas, the foundation and site work was just not properly prepared. So, we had a walk-through, we did a walk-around of the site, Ellen, what was that, a couple of weeks ago, I guess? And there were, there's some previous, there's a previous allocation out there for some repair work at Lincoln and we're working with Meg White to try to use that money, having just prepared some language for a work scope to bring in architects and engineers to actually evaluate the existing condition to determine what is actually repairable, what needs to be completely removed and rebuilt. And thirdly, what needs to be rethought and redesigned? In other words, we may have large areas of poured concrete that we just don't need. This dovetails with Judy's comment a moment ago. We talk about play space and how much is sort of, whether it's the artificial, that sort of rubberized surface or it's grass. We have a, we have a shortage of play space at Lincoln. So, that's something that needs to be considered. And then I'll also just offer, we have a number of instances at Lincoln where we have pedestrian pathways off of Mystic Valley Parkway that rise to the building with steps. Those are not part of the accessible route. And in one instance, I think they were literally designed because the building is such a traditional sort of Bozart symmetrical style. Somebody thought it would be a good idea. So, we've actually sort of been repairing walkways and pathways that number one, aren't really necessary and number two, not likely used very much. So, I think this is a good exercise to kick off. I think Meg's gonna be advertising that soon. And then the outcome of that will have some bearing. Brian, if you can scroll down on your screen share, there was a line there about the drainage work at Lincoln. It'll be, there we go. So, this is right now, Lincoln playfield drainage in sight. You know, that's only, you know, on Judy's ranking, it's number five. And I'm about to throw out something here in a moment that we should consider as well before we get to a place in a couple of weeks to vote this. But I think this is something capital has looked at a little bit skeptically, just trying to understand the big picture. But what I'm hopeful is with this more thorough sort of architectural and engineering analysis of Lincoln, we'll have a better picture of what this line item right here for 93 can and should be. So, I'm, I'm happy that, that that's moving forward. Couple of thoughts I want to share just about Parker's. So, I want to remind the committee that we last made a major investment in Parker's back in 2012. We spent about $1 million, 1.1 million on Parker's and to use it for two years to support students' swing space for the construction of VO. And so, with this goal of a new and expanded Lynch with a consolidated preschool, if we're bringing students in in the fall of 21, we're thinking about using Parker's for students for really twice that, right? So, for four years until the fall of 2025. And the biggest investment, of course, is the elevator, which is huge that that's happening and we're all appreciative of that. But what I wanted to just share is it, I think it's important that we have an operational plan about Parker's that actually drives the investments that we need to make, both in terms of how that building is used, meaning what students are in the building and where. And then the timeline is important too. So, it's, it was, we came up with back in 2011 about 1.4 million dollars of stuff that we felt was important to Parker's, but we didn't spend that. We cut that back. We cut that back to around a million or 1.1, in part because we knew we were just gonna need the building for a couple of years. So, the capital committee has, and Judy knows where I'm going with this, capital committee has really been aggressively looking for the plan for Parker's. They supported the idea of the elevator, but really want to know who's gonna be in that building in the fall of 21. And we had committed that by the end of this school year, the one that just ended, we would have some plan for that. When I say plan, that doesn't mean like detail about which kids go into which rooms, but more just kind of high level. Are we bringing pre-K into Parker's? Are we bringing K5 students into Parker's? And I think at a recent meeting, we even discussed about the potential to move central office downstairs, which might free up some additional space upstairs. So, particularly now with all the work that our administrators are doing with DSE around COVID, it's no small feat to move central office, even if you're staying in the same building. You think about all your technology and that's been put into the building. Seems to me that's a big deal to move downstairs where we already have a lot of assembly spaces. I think if, if the superintendent is comfortable saying that we're, we're gonna be using Parker's to basically consolidate our pre-K in the fall of 21, that's really an important decision to be made and to be communicated. It frees up space at VO and Lynch, does not address the space issue she just mentioned at Lincoln. But if we know that that's gonna be the direction and then we can even stake, take it a step further and say, we'll just use the lower level, then I think those are the very high-level decisions that, that then are kind of our, our, our school building projects, working group could take a look at and kind of come up with a list of what needs to be done at Parker's. And I'm sorry I'm going on about this, but I just want to be clear that because of the, that the cost overrun on the elevator, capital planning committee, you know, expressed a real reluctance to fund other major initiatives at Parker's. However, with one important footnote, I do think they'd be open to it. If, if there's something we need to do at Parker's to accommodate, for instance, pre-K for up to four years and it's something that we cannot afford out of our operating budget, then we need to figure that out pretty quickly and we need to go to capital with that request. Because this cycle that we actually will start on July 22nd, that's our first capital session, with other departments, not schools, by the way. Whatever we're doing now this summer is gonna drive requests in the fall for funding for construction next summer. So, this is really our opportunity to get funding from capital for anything that's necessary at Parker's or anywhere else for that matter. In terms of timing, I would also just add the schools typically come in towards the tail end, but particularly this cycle, capital planning committee appreciates that we've just kicked off that Morocco study that Judy mentioned and we're not likely to get recommendations until the end of August. So, in fact, it was, it was noted at the last capital meeting that we will be the caboose bringing in our requests at the end of August or very early September. And the committee's totally okay with that. So, I would, I would really push a conversation about kind of firming up what the plan is for Parker's in the fall of 21. If it helps at all, Judy, I totally, I totally support. I like the idea of bringing in pre-K. I think that makes, makes a lot of sense. You've already mentioned some of the operational issues. For instance, you don't need a principal and that's kind of the administrative role Sarah Casey plays. We've got other things we have to fill, like you need a nurse, I presume. But from an operating budget point of view, it seems, that seems to be a logical way to go. But, you know, we aren't the superintendent. You are. But I think that would be really important. I know the capital planning committee's looking for that. Then the last thing I want to throw out there is that we've spent millions of dollars already on the Vincent Owen School to accommodate that build-out on the third floor. The master plan says that in this time period, in this 10 years, there's really three things we need to do to accommodate growth in our elementary population in Winchester. We need to rebuild Lynch and we need to add capacity for an additional 100 to 120 kids. We need to do the same thing at Morocco. And we also need to build out the third floor at VO for an additional 100 student capacity. It's not so much like an à la carte where you could do one, two, or three. The recommendation is you do all three because that's the kind of growth in, in capacity that we would need if we see the kind of growth in development, 40Bs and so forth, which we are absolutely seeing, as Judy has mentioned in prior meetings. So, I want the committee to just understand that, both in terms of building egress, fire stairs, bathrooms, assembly spaces, meaning the cafeteria, the gymnasium, all of the support spaces at VO, that building was designed to accommodate 580 kids, which is what we would have if we added those five classrooms or 560, maybe off by one classroom in terms of total capacity. But that was all sort of calculated and we made a big investment in that building. The, the estimates to do that work, if we were to have that work complete by the fall of 23, two years before Lynch, would be somewhere between 3.5 and 3.7 million dollars. And so, the cost to do a schematic, a detailed schematic study with an updated cost estimate, I would estimate it between 60 and 90,000 dollars. And so, I want the committee to understand that because if, if we as a committee continue to believe that our solution towards continued enrollment growth lies not in one project, but multiple projects. And if we recognize the significant investment we made in VO and if we're particularly concerned that we may be growing faster than we can meet the demand, there exists an opportunity to pick up an additional capacity for 100 students in what I still suggest today is a state-of-the-art school. It's a beautiful school with all the support spaces that we need. We could, if we wanted to, put in a capital request for that schematic study. Not because capital would necessarily be in a position to pay for the whole project. That would, there'd be a conversation about debt exclusion overrides, long-term bonding and so forth. But all our major projects that come out of the master plan have to be funded somehow. And I think it's important, for me personally, I certainly advocate now that the Lynch feasibility study is funded and we're kind of going down the tracks. And I think this committee recognizes we're not gonna move on a major Morocco project next. That's gonna have to wait. The, the next project for us to look very seriously at is VO. And we can get that project for, my gosh, a fraction of the cost and much faster than we can get Lynch. So, that's something for, you know, certainly the committee to think about. As I said, I estimate between 60 and 90,000 dollars. We could get a pretty detailed, updated schematic package and cost estimate and then kind of think about where we go from there. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Are there any questions from the committee for Dr. Evans or for anything that Mr. Nixon has just said? I'm gonna stop sharing this, by the way, unless anybody would like to keep it up.
I just have a question about process, Brian.
Okay.
So, this is the first time this has been shared with us. Past practice, we have gotten this list and heard the, the reasoning behind different items on the list and then sort of individually voted as, as committee members about what our priorities are and brought that back. Is that still the process you're intending to use? I'm not sure what our role here is today, other than an update and a, and their first look at the information. How do you see this going forward from here?
For Evans?
Yeah, I'd be, no, I'd be happy to suggest something, Brian.
I think that's...
Sure. So, the reason we need the rankings is so that when Chris goes to the capital planning committee, he can represent what the priorities are as, as voted by school committee. So, my recommendation would be, as, you know, as Chris points out, capital planning's expecting this kind of late in the process because we're hoping to get a fairly speedy decision on Morocco. That's really going to give us some indication about prioritization and additional requests. And also, the Lincoln work would give us additional feedback, as Chris said, on the site. So, I guess my recommendation would be, it would be helpful at the next meeting to do what we normally do is, is give, give a list to school committee members and try to reach some consensus about prioritization, knowing that we'll likely have to reuse this several times once the Morocco information comes in and once the Lincoln information comes in, if we're going to change any of the rankings. Chris, does that process make sense? Kind of next meeting, do preliminary signals for prioritization and then revisit this as more information comes in from the two architectural efforts?
It, it kind of does. I, I'm not sure if we even need to get it on the agenda for the very next meeting. I, only because we really are, the whole, not only are we expected to come last this cycle, but in fact, we're starting the process later than usual. And so, I think, if you will, that kind of buys us a little bit of extra time. I think it would be helpful too, Judy, if we could, and Ellen, if we could circle back with Pete on things like the Ambrose Roof. I mean, I'm just thinking Ambrose opened in 2005, I believe. I think the roof went on in, in '04. It's a 20-year roof. So, you know, if we're, if we're really, we're seeing failures now, that concerns me. We didn't spend as much time on that particular item as we did other stuff. So, I just, I don't want to, you know, mislead the school committee. That is absolutely something that's gonna be on the radar. The Morocco roof is older than the Ambrose roof by about five years. So, that's, I think, why we all fully expect when our consultants are done, we will learn we need to do a new roof. So, it, it might, it might be helpful if we circle back with Pete on a couple of these things, maybe talk to Meg about the timeline for that, the Lincoln consulting as well. But I think to Michelle's point, the way we've typically done it, where each committee member kind of gets a ranking sheet and we do them and we submit them to administration and it comes back and the committee reviews and discusses it. I think we should absolutely follow. And I might suggest, Ellen, it would be helpful, I think, I think the Flansburg team was actually just out at Morocco yesterday to kind of kick off their building evaluation. It might be helpful, Judy, if we could, I mean, give them, give them a week or week and a half to really sink their teeth into this. Check in with the architecture and engineering team that's doing the Morocco work and just say, what do you think? Or is it really end of August when we're gonna get something preliminary? They, they may turn around and say, end of the first week of August, we can already tell you what the top priorities are. So, I, I, I agree with the process that we typically followed. I'm just not sure we need to like be voting anything at the next meeting. It might be a little bit early.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Can, can I just ask though the question? I know others haven't spoken yet. But is there any interest in the, this idea of the schematic study for VO? I feel like this is exactly the kind of thing I would really be more comfortable advocating for when we do the, the building summit that Xena has asked for, which I think is a great idea. Maybe we do that jointly with the select board. But, but I just, I want the committee just to, let's not forget, we've made significant investment in VO to grab that space. And every year that goes by that we don't do it, you can argue that's an investment not realized. But more importantly, you know, building codes, they get updated, they get changed from time to time. And so, that may become a higher and higher, higher hurdle to clear, should we never move forward and actually do the work.
So, Mr. Nixon, I just wanted to comment that I'm excited about the building summit or whatever, workshop, whatever we'd like to call it. I also strongly believe, unless the committee feels otherwise, that it would be better in person, which may not mesh with the idea of having potentially discuss this in time to have it be a capital priority. So, we have to decide as a committee whether having that, being able to do that in person and being able to look at a chalkboard and being able to write things down outweighs our need for speed. and being able to look at a chalkboard and being able to write things down, um, outweighs our need for speed as far as any issues we have in mind. So I simply throw that out there. I'm, I'm not uncomfortable with including any projects that we think are appropriate to list in our rankings. It, each project may not rise up high enough to fund, but I don't think this should be in opposition to funding, to ranking projects. Well, you know, I've been on capital for many years and there are lots of projects that are number four every single year. So I'm not saying that that would be what any project would be. I'm simply saying that there's no reason to avoid listing something because we're afraid, um, it will be low. We just see where it goes.
Yep. Can, can I offer just one other observation about how it, it all becomes kind of mushy and sticky? When, one of the things that we discussed back in 2012 was how much Parkhurst needed a new roof. Parkhurst has one of the most unusual roofs out there and, and Pete will tell you, there's no other school building in the state and probably the country that has two layers of shingles on a pitched roof. And on top of that, you've got this asphalt sheet membrane that was applied. It is, um, it's a most creative solution that was, it was literally sort of thrown on that way when we needed the building as swing space for the construction of Ambrose. So this goes back to 2002 and 2003. And Pete has long been concerned about that roof and yet it managed well during the VO piece. But that's absolutely, if we were going to use that building for any length of time, we would prioritize a roof. And, uh, and Judy and Ellen, you know, we talked about some of the shortcomings of the heating system at Parkhurst as well. There are some major building systems that would need some attention, uh, but the question is the timeline. So I, what I would suggest to you all, think, think about just your impression, having walked through Morocco, the shape that that building is in, and think of your impression of Parkhurst, absent the beautiful sort of cleanup, post-flood work that was done downstairs. It, it's really easy to imagine that if, if we think we're going to need to spend, let's say, $3 million on Morocco, on a variety of building systems and envelope components, and that's kind of a number that we've thrown around. If we feel we would need to spend 3 million on Morocco in the next three or four years, isn't it likely we'd need to spend kind of the same amount of money at Parkhurst? I, I think it's quite possible. The difference is that with Morocco, we kind of have a timeline. What we've said is that we, 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 we seem to be open to this idea of spending something like 3 million at Morocco because we don't expect to have a replacement school until 2028. So the way I do that math in my mind is $3 million is okay, 3 million-ish, could be a little more, a little less. Because I can sort of amortize that in my mind, even though I'm going to have to bond it, it's going to be a 20-year payment, but I'm going to, I'm going to get like eight years of use out of that building. What I struggle with, with Parkhurst is we haven't, we haven't sort of said or demonstrated a need for eight years of Parkhurst. If, if, if we do no other building project but the new Lynch in the short term, then that means we need Parkhurst for four years. So what's, what kind of investment makes sense? What's a, what's a valuable, how do, how do I assess the value of an investment in Parkhurst if I'm going to get four years out of it? And then that's where the VO piece comes in. That's so interesting to me. We could have, we could have an additional 100 student capacity at VO by the fall of 2023. And for a, for a fraction of what modular classrooms cost, but three, three and a half, 3.6 million dollars is a lot of money. But that's not, that's kind of the number we're talking about possibly at Morocco. That might be a number we could spend at Parkhurst, but the issue is if you spend that kind of money at VO, I, I still think of VO as a brand new building. It's not, but I, I think of it that way. And if we were to move on VO and if we were to target that extra capacity by the fall of 23, well, then that kind of changes the calculus on Parkhurst because no longer do we need Parkhurst for four years. We need it for two, which is exactly what we used it for for VO. So when I describe it all as a little squishy, what I just simply mean is, you know, move action, execution on one building project can kind of reframe the need for another. At the end of the day, it's clear we're out of space today. We're not going to have new space anywhere by the fall of 21. So we need to move some kids into the building. But I think the VO discussion is an important one to have. And, and if it's helpful for the committee, I'm happy to put together some, you know, additional information and, and that we can discuss at the next meeting. But I, I just, I wanted to, I wanted to try to sort of explain how in my mind, these are all really interrelated.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Um, so it sounds like, are there any more questions from the committee? Sounds like the next steps for us at a minimum are that we will be revisiting this, perhaps not at our next meeting, but at a subsequent meeting. Then offline, Mr. Nixon and I can speak about what we might want to present at that meeting. And, uh, see where we go from there. But at some point, we'll be ranking, um, the projects for submission to capital planning in the fall. So since we know we're going to be doing this again, I feel like, uh, that was a good, uh, start. And maybe we can move on to the next agenda item, unless anybody else has anything more. Seeing none, uh, move on to the next agenda item, which is the committee assignments. Uh, you should have all seen, um, the proposed committee assignments for the 2021 school year. I, did everyone get, get a chance to look at the document that was sent out? And the chair. See if this works. Do you see a committee assignment document there?
Yes.
Anyone? Okay, perfect. Um, so I, I made an effort to change, I would say as little as possible. I think much like we thought during COVID and we still are in COVID, people being where they know well what they're doing in a time of change seemed to make a lot of sense. I reached out to each one of you. I heard back from each one of you. I changed those assignments, which are naturally made toward, uh, the chair and the vice chair so that they now represent, are represented by the chair and the vice chair. The most significant changes, well, less significant changes. We had McCall project volunteering to do. That has been changed to Lynch project communications. While that project is still pre-EFPBC, it's still under our domain. Um, so it's changed there. The other changes are office hours. I would encourage the entire committee to consider doing monthly office hours. We, uh, will continue them through COVID and through return. And Ms. Bolliniers has volunteered to be a coordination for that. So I would just let people know that. At the bottom, we have the, uh, school assignments. I've tried to adjust it such that everyone is assigned to a school where they either have a kid or if they do not have a child there, they are the most, they've most recently had a child there. So it's only been subtle changes there. So I don't see a lot of significant changes here. And I try, again, I tried to take everybody's feedback as best I could. Are there any things that people would like to see? Are there, um, suggestions they have before we move forward with this as, um, our, uh, subcommittee working group in town or assignments for the following year? Ms. Bolliniers?
Um. Sorry, I'm getting, there's lots of background noise back here from my kids. Just in looking through this and in light of, um.
It's okay. We like kids.
And just in, in light of, um, our, just our, in, in light of the climate now, um, around anti-racism and the discussions that we perceive that we might be having, is there, um, an interest in perhaps having a committee, subcommittee on equity and inclusion maybe headed up by one of us?
I would, I would also encourage that. I, I'm not sure how we could take up a statement on anti-racism without having some actionable objectives to come out of that. And I think that a working group like that would be really useful to begin to have some of those conversations.
Hi, I, Nixon?
I, I think it's a hugely important topic. And the reason I don't like the idea of a subcommittee is I think we just all need to be talking about it as a group. And I think that that may even require, maybe it's a dedicated meeting to the subject, but on something as important as this, I, I'm concerned that there may be discussion, there may be important discussion that the rest of the committee either isn't in on or participating in. I, I feel like we're, we just, it's an all hands on deck issue and, and should be, and maybe, and therefore should not be sort of wedged into an otherwise full agenda for, you know, where we have other important business to discuss. So I, I think it's hugely important. I appreciated everything that came in public comment, but I would, I would push back and say, I, I just think that the whole committee owns this.
Mr. Nixon, what if we, um, added it as a permanent agenda item moving forward?
I think that's a really good idea. I mean, my reaction is that's a really good idea. You know, in, in years past, the committee has sort of acknowledged, and I think including some members with us today, that because we're a public body, when we use words like, we need to have a community conversation, it's not really clear what that is, right? As a public body, we really do two things. We have school committee meetings at which there really is no back and forth with the public. It's a one-way piece during public comment, except when we interact on an agenda. And then you can have a public hearing. And so maybe that's the way, may, maybe it's a standing agenda item and just in terms of check-in, um, or if it, it, perhaps, Brian, it's, it's a way to invite others in the community who wish to speak outside of public comment. It's an, it's an agenda item. You know, the select board has agenda items and they welcome members of the public to speak to agenda items. That's an option to begin to solicit some more feedback and input. But having discussions and engaging, um, maybe it has to be a, a public hearing. But it, it has to, it has to be a, it has to be one or the other because we're a public body.
I'm also fine with the idea of having it come up as a regular agenda item for all of us to discuss. And I think that is important, uh, for all of us to be in on that conversation.
So Ms. Marchand, do you have any comments? Okay. Um, I guess I, I think it, having a subcommittee or a working group on anti-racism would be a real step forward for our committee in our town. I would prefer to have some smaller number of individuals digging deeply into these issues and being able to bring them back to our committee so that we can discuss them fully at our committee as opposed to having a standing agenda item each meeting. So that would be my preference. I, I think it's a great idea, but I, I'm, uh, at the will of the committee to go either way. I, I think that there are, likely will be issues that come up that need to have a working group involved. And by having such a subcommittee set up, we have a working group readily available to tackle an issue that takes place as opposed to having to form a working group each time that happens. So, um, that's my thoughts.
A point of information, then Brian, maybe Karen could clarify her initial suggestion because I, I think questions about, uh, a, a mascot, if you call it that, the Satchem logo, the name that we heard a lot about today in public comment is, is sort of one issue. Uh, another suggestion about incorporating anti-racism into the curriculum is kind of a different. To me, that's a different, but really important animal. And we do already have a curriculum subcommittee established. And that may have been the point you were just making. So I can imagine, and, and by the way, that obvious, that has to include folks like superintendent, the assistant superintendent and so forth. When we talk about adjustments to the curriculum, that has to be a broader sort of deeper effort. So I, I can imagine like there is, because there already is a curriculum subcommittee, I could imagine that going to task on suggestions around curricular changes. I, I think I may have misunderstood Karen's original suggestion. I think our conversation though around the mascot, the logo is something that is already, it's been in public for a while. It's even more so now. And that's what I just sort of feel like we own as a committee. So that, that particular piece, I'd rather not be like in a subcommittee space. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I mean, I, I understand. I would want to be clear that we have not had a standing curriculum committee at the school committee level for, for several years now. So, uh, we have subcommit, subcommittees for curriculum, in this case, student success and wellness research group and then CIA. So I just want to be clear about that. If, uh, if the, I, I don't actually have a sense of whether the will of the committee is to add a subcommittee or working group or whether you want to have that be a more agenda item. I see both, um, um, Ms. Bolliniers go first and then Ms. Berks from afterwards. Ms. Bolliniers?
Um, I was, I guess I was just going to clarify or maybe update. I think it's, I think, I guess I acknowledge both Mr. Nixon's comments and your, your comments, Mr. Vernalia, about having this as a standing agenda item. But then I also see that there is a benefit to being able to have somebody work or somebody work deeply with the community on issues of equity and inclusion. And I guess with respect to your question, Mr. Nixon, about, uh, what's the scope of this? I guess I am not perceiving this just as, uh, the logo, the school mascot logo only, but then also, um, other issues that have come up. So.
Ms. Berks, true?
Um, can I make a suggestion that perhaps, um, Ms. Bolliniers, um, maybe, uh, take some time to, uh, design what she would feel the scope and purpose of the working group might be and then present that back to us at the next meeting? I believe there may be some, um, similar actions going on in the select board and maybe she could touch base with them as well. And, um, uh, that maybe if we had a more defined scope and purpose of this working group, that other people may be more comfortable with it.
Ms. Bolliniers, are you, um, willing to work on that?
Sure.
Thank you. So I, I think that we will leave that as an open item to be discussed moving forward. But as far as the subcommittees, uh, it sounds like there are no, um, issues with the subcommittees. So I think I will move on to the next agenda item, which is.
By, can I run quick?
Yeah.
So this is completely unrelated. I'm just wondering what you see the role of, um, the COVID committees are going forward. Some of them overlap some of the other things that we are doing. We instituted those at a time of emergency. I'm wondering if, um, those are still have a purpose? And maybe when we talk about the working group, we can talk about how we're defining those going forward as well.
I, I'd be delighted to do that at that time. I might also say that I see that we are still in a COVID emergency right now, judging by the fact that we're not able to be present and that we are not able, not even certain to what school will look like in the fall. So I see the need for all, um, for the COVID, um, sub groups, individuals, um, still valuable right now as they are. But i- if the committee feels differently, it feels like those should be folded into the, uh, other areas. I actually feel like they are generally in line, aligned with the areas of the individuals. For instance, distance learning is aligned with the two curriculum subcommittees, which you are working on. The finance is aligned with me, um, and that's with the budget advisory committee. Contracts is aligned with Xena, who is not only working on OTPT, but has been doing the, the, um, MOAs, um, throughout the entire COVID period. And then the building projects is aligned with, um, the Lynch project communication, which is what Mr. Nixon is doing. And then we took off the, uh, communications, community outreach, um, and moved that over to office hour coordination because that, um, now that we have a setup for how to reach out to people through office hours, that seemed more appropriate than sort of, uh, emergency outreach, which we were doing. So that would be my thoughts. If you, um, if the committee feels differently, we. Okay.
Brian, you've slightly glitched, at least on my computer.
I glitched? Which part?
Just at the very last moment.
Ah, no, I finished and said, so, uh, we could easily. Ah, no, I finished and said, so we could either keep those COVID committees' assignments as they are, or we could fold them in. And I'm amenable to either way, but I see a need for them still right now during this emergency.
I'm happy with it the way it is for now, anyway.
Yeah, for now.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So with that, we move on to the next agenda item, which is to discussion on the MAS C statement on anti-racism. The Massachusetts Association.
One quick question, sorry.
Absolutely.
With regard to the office hours, is this the appropriate time just to ask if other, if Mr. Marshawn, Mr. Nixon, and Ms. Bergstrom, and you are all interested in helping with the office hours, or?
I think that would, this is a great time to ask the committee who would like to participate in office hours. There's no requirement that any member of the school committee participate in office hours. If you are interested in committing, in participating, I think it's reasonable to let Ms. Bollinger's know.
I have, I have a question. I almost raised this myself. I just decided maybe this wasn't the best time. So office hours are kind of a new thing for the school committee. I think the members here recall there was some conversation with administration about it, and there was not sort of unanimity about doing it or the value of it, maybe some concern about the format. So I, I've not participated in it. And I think I would love to know, and this is maybe not the place to do it, but I defer to the chair. I, I'd love to just get a sense of how it's going. What's the usefulness of it? Can, can the committee get some sort of feedback? I mean, certainly those who I think have been participating aren't coming back to the school committee to say, these are the topics we heard about at office hours. At least I don't remember it being presented that way. So if, if it's helpful and it's useful, that's really good to hear. But I, I, I simply haven't been in a position to participate so far, just given, I guess, the dates and the times that they've been set up for it. But that doesn't mean I couldn't participate in the future. But let, let me just say, I think I, I would appreciate some sort of context to better understand how they're going, and if they're useful and helpful, why? And how, is there a feedback loop to the school committee? And if that's not something you feel appropriate to discuss right this moment, maybe we do it at the next meeting.
I think that would be a good topic of conversation for a future meeting, most notably because it's 12:20 PM. And I think this could be a lengthy conversation. And certainly also something that individually I can talk to you offline about. But I think it's something that we should talk about moving forward, because I think communication with the community is something, it's, it's a repeated cry that we hear, that they want more communication, two-way communication with the committee, and with the town, and with the schools. And this was an opportunity to provide that. And I think it's a good topic of conversation for a future meeting, as I said. But so unless Ms. Bollinger is the representative to coordination, and you feel something you want to add, are you okay with postponing this to a future meeting?
That's fine. We can discuss it in more detail at a future meeting. I would just say that the feedback that I had heard was that it's a good opportunity to reach out to school committee members on a more one-to-one basis. But we can discuss more later.
Okay. Thank you very much. So with that, seeing no more questions, I will move on to the next agenda item, which is have a discussion about the MAS C statement on anti-racism. The MAS C has released a statement on anti-racism. The statement is in line with our human rights statement, as well as our policy on non-discrimination. And while I've been reading a lot of letters today, I want to read one small section of the resolution. Resolve that Winchester and all school districts in the Commonwealth must guarantee that racist practices are eradicated, and diversity, equity, and inclusion is embedded and practiced for our school students, families, faculty, and staff. Voting to support this resolution will show our continued commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. But voting this is easy, and doing the work to moving forward is hard. We know that there's a lot of work ahead of us. I bring this before you today as a discussion item, rather than an action item, because to support this resolution while ignoring the use of the Satchem name and logo in our schools would ring hollow to many. Whether your opinion, whatever your opinion on the use of Native American imagery in school athletics, we must commit to addressing this issue in a collaborative way, at the same time that we commit to redoubling our efforts on anti-racism. If there's a consensus to move forward with both supporting this statement and committing to engaging the community on the future of the Satchem name and logo, we can add the former to, and as an action item in two weeks. And the latter to be a discussion item in the coming weeks and months ahead, hopefully in person, rather than over Zoom. Lastly, I would like to add that I've been a lifelong Winchester resident and a proud graduate of the class of 1990. I've always been proud of my classmates, my school, and my town. That pride, however, comes not from the choice of school logos, but rather from the character of the people that I've learned with, and from my four years at Winchester High School, and over 48 years in Winchester. So I opened with that, and I now open this as a topic for discussion. Anybody has anything they would like to discuss on this matter?
Brian, just to clarify, you were, you're suggesting we not act on it right now, but we act on it in a couple of weeks. Is that right?
Correct. This is, currently is a discussion item, and I felt uncomfortable having this as an action item, until we also committed to having a discussion moving forward out of some sort of timeline of some sort, of addressing and looking at the use of Native American imagery in school athletics.
And although I didn't hear you say it explicitly, are you, are you interested in, and would you welcome that this school committee perhaps add a paragraph to this that makes some commitment to address that very issue? In other words, that would be unique to Winchester? Is that where you were going?
I was not explicitly going there. However, I would welcome that.
I think that's a very interesting way, because I, I think that this is going to be, this is an important and necessary conversation to have, and it's going to take more than two weeks, as I think you've said on behalf of this committee to members of the public. And so I think if, to the extent you're concerned that it would ring hollow to folks, whether we vote it now, it may still be hollow in two weeks. And so to the extent there's a way for us to make some commitment to that discussion and that process, and what really our goals are, and to include that in the resolution, might be a way to kind of hit two birds with one stone. And I have no specific language to offer right now, but I'd be, I'd be open to that for us to consider in a couple of weeks.
I would be very supportive of that, and I as well have no language to offer. I think my intention with the preamble before we spoke about this was to simply express my discomfort with passing this without discussing the use of the Native American imagery. I, I didn't think I could do one without the other.
Mr. Vernalia, would it be possible to place the statement on anti-racism on the shared screen?
It certainly is possible.
Is that desirable?
No, no, it's certainly desirable, too. It's, is it technically possible is what I'm. It's at the end of the packet, so I should be able to get there in a second.
And Mr. Vernalia, are you suggesting that we simply put the anti-racism statement back on our agenda in two weeks, or actually a discussion of the SACAM logo and how it represents, or does not continue to represent the Winchester Public Schools?
So first of all, may I ask if you see this school committee anti-racism resolution on your screen?
I do.
Okay. My, my intent was that in two weeks, we vote this resolution either with or without an amendment as proposed by Mr. Nixon, the language of which has not been drafted, so we would have to draft that language between now and then. And at the same time, either in that statement, or as a committee, make the, the moral commitment that we are going to address this issue moving forward. It need not be a written commitment. It need not be an agenda item our next meeting. But in my mind, it needed to be that we were all on the same page that we're moving forward on this. It's not been something that's been discussed at school committee meetings during my tenure, though I know it likely has during Mr. Nixon's tenure, who's been here a little bit longer than I have. So I feel like it's something that we do no service by being quiet about. I think we do a disservice to our students by, and our town by simply looking the other way.
Because I believe we as a committee have already signed one resolution that was the Network for Social Justice had created. And I do tend to agree with you that just continuing to sign resolutions, that we have the right and responsibility to ensure equity in our schools and anti-racist practices without any actions behind that would ring hollow. I think that as educators, we, you know, as, as a board that supports public education and educators, we, we have a commitment and a responsibility to, to make, make, make these things a priority. So I would even go so far as to say I would be ready to add an agenda item, either at the next meeting or the meeting after, to, in discussion about the, the logo and its role in our schools.
Ms. Marshawn?
Brian, I think it's important for us to accept this resolution as one of the many school committees in the state, so that we are all standing strong on what public education needs to look like. The, the logo is definitely an issue we will be taking up. Whether we like it or not, the public is telling us we're going to take this up. And as we serve the public, that's what we'll do. But this anti-racist resolution is, is part of a bigger conversation that is statewide and nationwide. And so I think it's, it behooves us, since we all share this very fundamental moral view, that we accept this resolution as soon as possible with or without any amendments. But I think we need to be submitting Winchester school districts, having accepted this, to the main list that is being kept by the MAS C, so that we're all standing strong together.
I think that if we changed this resolution, it would change the nature of it. So I would also encourage us to accept this resolution as it is and have a separate, is what I was suggesting, a separate discussion resolution on addressing issues within our own district.
And I tend to agree as well that I think it's important to join in with other school committees in support of this resolution. And then I agree that we need to continue to have the discussion around our logo.
So if I'm hearing correctly, there is consensus that at a minimum, we should be approving this resolution. I'm a little vague on whether the committee feels a desire to have an amendment to this resolution that explicitly includes use of Native American imagery, specifically the Satchem in our schools, be addressed. Or if they would prefer us just, you'd prefer to just approve this resolution, which could be approved this week if we suspended our rules and made a motion to approve and to support this this week. Or it could be an agenda item in two weeks as an action item, because it's not currently listed as an action item on our agenda. So I could go either way, and I would take a motion if somebody wanted to move to suspend our rules to allow us to vote on this today. But I would also be totally open to considering it at our next meeting with or without an amendment.
So moved that we take this up for a vote today?
I second it.
So we have moved and seconded that we suspend our rules and take this up as a vote as written? As written, Ms. Marshawn?
Correct, with the substitution of, hold on, I can't see it.
Substitution of Winchester.
Yeah.
But with, without, I just want to be clear, as written, without any additional language regarding the use of Native American imagery?
Correct.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion before we vote? So I'll take the roll call vote. Mr. Nixon? This is a vote, this is a vote to suspend our rules to allow us to vote on this today.
And so then, Brian, you're separately then going to take a motion to approve, right? This is just a motion to suspend the rule. Okay, I'll, I'll support a motion to suspend the rules.
Ms. Ms. Bollinger?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. So that leads us to the main motion, which would be whether we vote to support this resolution as presented. If there's any, we can either have the discussion first, or we can have a moved and seconded and then discussion. I'm happy to do discussion first, and Mr. Nixon has a question.
So, yeah, I, I just, before we even take a motion, I, I want to say, I, I think you touched on something, I think the chair touched on something very important at the very beginning, about how, how our action on this as written might be interpreted and might it ring hollow? And I, I appreciate the importance of that growing list of districts that Xena mentioned. I mean, if MAS C has a list of districts, I think if we were to, if we were to keep everything as it is, and then add something specific to us, and then a commitment to a process on, you know, evaluating and getting rid of that, that the logo, the mascot, you know, the name, something in there that's unique to us, I don't think would keep, keep us from being counted on the list, because everything else that's here, we would agree to. I, I think it's a way for us to send a really clear signal to our community that we frankly have never sent before, that we're committed to this. And that might be a good way to do it. It, it's not wrong to do it the other way. If we vote to support this, it just means that there's another resolution we need to get to. And I think the point that Ms. Bergstrom made a moment ago is also an important one, which is, it, it's sort of, it's another resolution. Does it somehow get lost in the ether with all the resolutions? So I, I don't, I don't feel terribly strongly one way or the other. I, I just think though, that, I mean, the value of us as a committee, as individual members, can bring to light a point of view that we might not have otherwise thought about. And I, I just thought Brian's opening comment was particularly poignant. And I, I would feel better if we just incorporated some language that makes a real commitment to our community, and we, we do it in one stroke at the next meeting. I like everything that's here. I think it's an opportunity for us to get really serious and make a commitment moving forward. But I'm not going to vote, I won't vote against it as it's written, but I, I appreciate Brian's opening comment. That was it.
Any other comments or discussion?
I'll go ahead and say that this is exactly the launching pad we need for the logo discussion. And as a result, if Mr. Vernalia, you're ready for a motion, I can make the motion. I move that we approve the school committee anti-racism resolution as presented, other than substituting district with Winchester Public Schools.
I second this.
You moved and seconded?
Just to also comment that, as Ms. Marshawn was saying, I believe it is a launching pod. One of the resolution, or one of the items here is that we can no longer remain silent. And I think this is a launching pad for us.
Ms. Bergstrom?
I, I also believe that it's a launching pad, but only if today, after we vote this, we make a firm commitment to actually add this as an agenda item.
Agreed.
I will vote, I will vote yes, but I, I will request that we have a discussion following this as well.
So I'll call the vote. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Marshawn?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Bollinger? That recorded as an aye or muted. The chair says aye, so it's unanimous. Ms. Bergstrom, before we move on to the next agenda item, did I take you to be saying that you had something you wanted to move? Or were you simply discussing the consent of the committee that, that we, we commit to it morally to move forward? Or I wasn't sure if you had made some sort of proposed motion?
I was suggesting that as is on our agenda, we always take up future agenda items, and perhaps we could move forward with that now. And perhaps we could move forward with that now and agree that our future agenda item will be the opening of a discussion regarding this.
I would support that.
Any other comment regarding this? So.
I agree.
Seeing no dissent, while we aren't there yet, we will agree to when we get to future agenda items to add this discussion to that point. So thank you very much. That moves us on to the next agenda item, which are action items. The first action item is the acceptance of a gift to, from the Winchester High Parent Faculty Association to the Winchester High School Zen Garden. Ms. Widmore, I see you are here to present that?
Yes. The Winchester High School PFA hosted a fundraising event to benefit the high school Zen Garden. And they raised and donated $21,458.72 to be used for the construction of the Zen Garden over at the high school. And we are extremely grateful for the continued partnership with the high school PFA as well as all of our PFAs. Just the amount of work that, that the high school PFA has put into raising funds and supporting the vision and the dream of the high school students for a Zen Garden. We are very grateful and appreciative for them.
Thank you very much, Ms. Widmore. Are there questions for Ms. Widmore?
Will they be starting this summer?
Plans are in place and we are going to start working on a phased project that will begin over the summer.
Thanks. Thank you. I move.
Many other, Ms. Widmore, I have a simple question. Have they raised enough funds to complete what they're hoping to do?
Yes, they have.
Excellent. So would accept a motion?
I move that we accept gratitude, a donation in the amount of, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, Brian, can you read it? To support the construction of the Zen Garden at Winchester High School.
I'll second.
Seeing no further questions, roll call vote. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Marshant?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Bollinger?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Vote is unanimous. Moves us to our next agenda item, which is a gift from Lincoln Parents Faculty Association, the amount of $346.50 for just sketchbooks. Ms. Widmore, you are again listed to present.
These are sketchbooks for students gifted to, gifted by the Lincoln PFA. Again, we are very fortunate to have such strong PFAs at all of our schools who do so much to support our students as well as our teachers. So the $346.50 will be used to pay for sketchbooks that were ordered for students.
Thank you very much. Seeing no questions, is there a motion?
I move to vote to accept with gratitude the donation of $346.50 from the Lincoln PFA for sketchbooks.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Marshant?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Bollinger?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Vote is unanimous. Moves us on to our next agenda item. To vote on superintendent salary for fiscal year 21, this will be postponed to our next meeting on, remember what date, our next meeting, July 21st. So we will move past that. Final agenda item is to review and vote on the draft school committee meeting dates for 2021. You should have that in your packet. This is, no changes were suggested between when I put out a draft calendar and when I put out this filing calendar. I heard of no issues with anyone on the committee. If there are any issues with any of these dates or times, I would be encouraged to hear them now. I would encourage you to.
I just want to throw out an open question. The, the idea of having a school projects building summit that Ms. Marshant suggested at a recent meeting really would be helpful. And so while I agree with you, it would be most beneficial to do it in person. Is there some feeling of the committee that it would be better to, to schedule something? So at least we do something virtually or does that, does it feel like it's really important, but not until we can all meet physically? And, and I guess when we meet physically, we're still distancing, so we got to find a big space to do it. I just don't want to forget about that.
So I was just going to ask really quick, we had spoken about adding the workshops to this or creating a separate workshop calendar. So to Mr. Nixon's point, maybe at the next meeting, you could propose a workshop calendar for the things that we have planned to do.
That would be excellent. I agree. I feel, I'll, I'll let the committee decide. I feel moderately strongly that these are better in person, workshops are better in person than the formality of a meeting such as this where people can cut each other off and they can go back and forth and it can really be a give and take as opposed to the, the more formal nature of a school committee meeting, even though it would be a posted meeting. So I, I feel moderately strong, but if we could be like this till November, December, then at some point we have to say the need to get this on the books is more important. So I like Ms. Bergstrom's suggestion and I will work with the vice chair and the superintendent to come up with some dates and see if those dates can potentially be when we can meet in person. But if we can't meet in person by those dates, we could also, we'll have them on remote as we're planning. Is that acceptable?
Sounds great.
Thank you.
So as far as these dates for these meetings, are there any questions or concerns or someone ready to make a motion?
I vote to approve the school committee meeting dates for 2020, 2021 as presented.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Marshant? Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Bollinger?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Vote is unanimous. That leads us into our chair report. My chair report is going to be super, super brief, I promise. I just want to make sure all school committee members received an invitation from Senator Lewis's office about a Zoom meeting with Commissioner Riley next week that Dr. Evans alluded to. I would hope that you all would have an opportunity to attend that. That's the only thing I want to mention in my chair report, especially since it's 12:45. And I will move on to superintendent's report. Dr. Evans?
I just want to say thank you to the many community members, parents who volunteered to serve on the COVID response implementation planning team and school committee members for incredible hard work during this very trying time. All of us are putting forth our best effort. Just want to encourage everyone to please be patient and kind as things may get more difficult over the course of the summer. And please, please encourage your children and each other to wear masks so that we can all protect one another. I'm seeing increasing use of not social distancing and not wearing masks and please do wear masks. That would be great. It will help us get back to school sooner. And that's all I have.
Brian, can I, can I put you there on the spot and, and ask, because I don't think you shared this with us at the last meeting? The, your, your kind of surprise participation in open enrollment?
Mm-hmm. So we had 19 applications for open enrollment. And as sometimes happens, we are able to place students in open enrollment and then the, the families change their minds. So I think at this point, we have about 15 confirmed students moving across districts for open enrollment this year. All grade levels, all open spots had at least one student apply and moving. So several kindergartners, so what we were trying to do and hoping to do was move some Lynch students elsewhere so that we could equalize enrollment across the district. And some kindergarten students have moved to Morocco from Lynch. There were many more requests for Lincoln than we could accommodate. And we've got a few at VO and a few at Ambrose. So the only school who didn't have open seats was Lynch. All other schools will have some open enrollment students and I expect in the end it'll be about 14 or 15 students who go through with it.
Thank you. I just wanted to offer 15, historically speaking, that's a huge number. And so it makes it, it makes it worthwhile. I mean, it's clearly a better fit for whatever reason for certain families, so good for them. But I mean, we all appreciate it as a district and we're able to alleviate a little bit of pressure.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Seeing no more questions, moving to future agenda items. We have return to school will be a continued agenda item, facility update, fiscal year 20 budget close and transfer, personnel update, fiscal year 21 budget update, which obviously all of these are going to be ongoing. Some of them will be sooner, some of them will be ongoing. And we've agreed that we add as a future agenda item, a discussion on the use of Native American imagery, specifically the Satcham logo and name in Winchester sports, Winchester schools. So that will be added as an agenda item. Our next meeting dates are July 21st at 6:00 PM. For the committee members, I'll note that we will likely have need of an executive session prior to that. But for the public, the meeting will start at 6:00 PM. And if we can't all meet at 6:00 PM, we might have to push the date time back so that we can have our executive session at 6:00, followed by a meeting later. But currently it would be 6:00 PM, the public meeting, August 4th at 9:30 AM. I want to thank you all for an epically long meeting today and I would accept a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, everybody say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Bye.
Bye.